Okay, everyone, we're going to get started with our next agency, the Department of Housing and Community Development. And our Housing Commissioner, she's going to be doing a presentation at this time.
Okay. All right, um, I think we are good to get started here. So, uh, good afternoon, Chairwoman McCray, Vice Chair Slifer, and members of the committee, as well as members of the council. Um, I'm here, joined here today, I'm Alice Kennedy. I'm the Housing Commissioner, uh, for Baltimore City Department of Housing and Community Development. And I am joined here today by a number of our staff members, um, that I'll just run through very quickly, so you know who is here, uh, with me. We have Scott Davis, our Chief of Staff, Theon Ngongeng, our Chief Operating Officer, Tammy Holly, our Chief of Strategic Communications, Kimberly Rubens, our Chief of, uh, Policy and Research, um, MC Bittner, our Chief of Implementation and Innovation, Felicia Knight-Davis, our Chief of, uh, Human Resources, Wendy Redfern, our Deputy Commissioner for Development, Jason Hessler, Deputy Commissioner for, uh, Permits and Litigation, Eric Booker, Deputy Commissioner for Code Enforcement, Nicole Hart, Deputy Commissioner for Homeownership and Housing Preservation. Um, we also have, um, instead, uh, Mary Korea, Deputy Commissioner of Consolidated Planning, cannot be here, David Fielder, Assistant Commissioner, is here representing Consolidated Planning. We also have with us our Assistant Commissioners, Erica Yates and Nancy Goldring from, uh, Code Enforcement, as well as Tamara Woods from our Development Division, Joe Kirchner from Development. And we also have our Legislative Liaisons, Stephanie Murdoch and Jason Wright, as well as a number of other staff members from our Department of Finance, HR, and, um, the Executive Team. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to present on the Department of Housing and Community Development's fiscal year 2026 budget. I want to rec, uh, be, begin by recognizing, um, not just the staff that are here with me, but over the, over 400 staff members, um, because it is their professionalism, professionalism, resilience, and relentless dedication that are the foundation of our agency's progress. Staff morale continues to be a top priority, because the strength of our service delivery, our innovation, and our impact on the city are directly tied, uh, to the people who show up to do this work every day. Operational success depends on a clear understanding of the agency vision, and ensuring that support from people, processes, and technology are aligned. DHCD is focused on building the strong understanding of vision, and we are actively cultivating the necessary values of continuous improvement and commitment to action among our staff. When we talk about our agency's budget, we are not simply discussing line items. We are talking about values. The budget reflects our commitment to equity, to accountability, and to the idea that every Baltimorean deserves access to safe, affordable housing in thriving and vibrant neighborhoods. That vision includes establishing a standard of care for every neighborhood, where safe streets, working lights, parks, grocery stores, and other essential community assets are not viewed as amenities, but as baseline expectations for every resident, which I view as necessities. Our work must be understood through a holistic lens. Housing intersects with public health, economic mobility, education, and public safety. And through our strategic partnerships, including with the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, the Fire Department, the Planning Department, and Recreation and Parks, we are aligning our work across agencies, um, to increase our collective impact. That alignment is core to reframe Baltimore, the citywide, um, the citywide initiative to eliminate vacant and abandoned properties, and it's a 15-year, $3 billion commitment. I'd like to highlight some of the, uh, most leading indicator on that. As of today, we're at 12,593 vacant properties in the city of Baltimore, which is the lowest it's been in 20 years, and a 20% reduction in the total number since Mayor Scott has taken office. We want to use every tool at our disposal, and we are pushing across every division to streamline delivery and modernize how we serve residents. Let me first start by addressing permits. I want to address this, um, openly here with you all, and I want to be very direct about the challenges we've encountered with the rollout of the new permit system. The rollout amplified existing systemic issues that must be addressed across the people, process, and technology that I mentioned earlier. This is not how we want to do business. We don't claim perfection, but we do claim responsibility. Four months ago, we replaced a permitting software that was at risk of critical failure with a new software that would be capable of handling 21st century permitting requirements. It's a sea change in our operations that did not end with the launch of Acela. It's an ongoing process of refinement and improvement, and part of the Be More Fast Initiative, in order to build a modern and efficient system that our residents deserve. I want to be very clear, we are not there yet. And I believe that you all know that we are not there yet. We know that this has been an extremely frustrating transition for many permit applicants. Some of the challenges we are facing could have been anticipated by us or by the vendor, and while others only emerged through real-time use. Since the launch date, we have been aggressively pursuing solutions in four major areas that impact customers the most: intake backlogs, customer service and permit review capacity, workflows between agencies, communication with active permit applicants, and all of which are building towards a larger goal of a streamlined and accessible permit process. Critical improvements we have gained so far include reducing 15 permit categories down to five, which we are now going to increase to six. Um, using new data collection capabilities to create a draft permitting dashboard, increasing customer service capacity to address the 200% increase in walk-ins and phone calls from the public. Top priority improvements that are currently in progress include faster processing of the over-counter permits, so nobody's small jobs are waiting in line behind more complicated ones, and that would be the, uh, six permit type that we will be adding. As well as in partnership with the CIO and OPI, a tiger team audit of intake processes and existing backlogs. And the top priority improvements will cumulatively eliminate some of the most acute challenges. We have a path forward to address critical issues, and we are working to restore public confidence. The important thing is, is that all these issues are solvable, and we are actively addressing them. We're committed to getting this right and appreciate your patience, as well as partnership, as we refine the new system. And I welcome constructive input from this body to help us make that happen. We have additional items that we're, uh, proud of, that we've been working on successfully in terms of our homeownership incentives, our INREM work, our code enforcement work, our home repair work, um, refinements that have been made in our light intake and assessment unit. And across all of these tools, we're focused on alignment: breaking down silos, tracking our progress through monthly all-hands internal performance management meetings, and coordinating across all divisions to meet the urgency of this moment. We prioritize accessibility and transparency as well through our work with our community, and know that community engagement and community outreach is critical. Coffee Break with Alice is one area where we have residents join us in an online forum. It's been held monthly without interruption since 2023, with over 3,000, uh, residents that have registered for that, uh, platform, and have participated, um, over 3,000 have registered for that platform. In closing, our proposed, uh, budget reflects a deliberative and comprehensive approach to community development. It supports a delivery system that is increasingly data-driven, transparent, equitable, and accountable. It funds the continuation of strategies that are already demonstrating real outcomes, and we're proud of the progress we made, but we're not slowing down. And we know that progress that we've made does not mean perfection, and it also does not mean that we are done with something. Success lies in balancing the big picture, the vision, with the small details. And because, while strategy sets the direction, it is those little things, and it is the details that keep everything moving forward. And DHCD is committed to taking action and continuous improvement to achieve operational excellence. And with that, I will, um, go through and run through our slides quickly, um, for everyone. We've had the agency overview of above, the next is our, um, before, wait, can... Okay, 593, our community support projects. Um, this is mainly our, uh, Consolidated Planning and our CDBG program, as well as our Community Catalyst Grant Program. Um, this is, you know, one of the key things here is that there are some of the positions that we do have, um, that are open right now are on hold because of just wanting to make sure our CDBG funding is available to be utilized, and in case anything happens in the future with that CDBG funding. Uh, Before and After Care is our next service. Um, this is, one of the key things here is actually transfer of operations of the Northwood Childcare Facility to Recreation and Parks. Um, but what that does do is that, uh, remains the Waverly, uh, Childcare Center still is in Service 604. So Northwood is transferred out, but the Waverly Center, uh, remains in the Service 604. Then our Service 737 is our administrative service. We'll jump, uh, to weatherization. Uh, this is a key one, we actually were able, um, to utilize a position in, um, weatherization that we needed in our housing rehabilitation services to help, um, move, uh, projects through. So it's a construction manager, uh, director-type position, um, to help us on our home repair programs and moving that, so we were able to move that position over. Our Promote Homeownership is Service 742. Um, this program continues to offer down payment and closing cost assistance for residents and homebuyers. Um, it also, uh, processes, um, our loan releases and, um, lean releases and loan releases on those kind of five-year forgivable, uh, loan products that we, uh, provide, as well as grants, um, through buying to, uh, Be More in partnership with Baltimore, the City Employee Incentive Program, as well as, uh, the Live Near Your Work Program. Service 745 is our code enforcement service. I do want to highlight on this service, um, and this might be one that was a little confusing in the budget book, um, that would show a decrease in funding for Service 745. What it does in fiscal year '26, it does not reduce the service of code enforcement. What it does is it aligns our work and our employees. So there's a significant number, we actually had 56 positions that we moved from 745 to Service 741, which is our admin legal... 51, did I say 41? 51. Um, it is 56 positions that move out of 745 to 751, which is our admin legal, notice production, um, demolition, SIU, um, and so forth. We also renamed, um, Service 751 to pick up that compliance. So what you see is a, um, decrease in 745 is actually mirrored in an increase in 751, and it does not impact any service delivery number of, uh, employees associated with code enforcement. It just aligns the work better in terms of the services and who is doing what work. So there's no impact of service deliveries to Baltimoreans. Uh, we have just moved where they sit in the budget. Service 747, that's our register and licensing of properties. Um, this actually has our, um, funded Open Gov system in for next year, and also being able to move, uh, one office support specialist, uh, position that we needed to move. Service 748 covers the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Um, the big thing here in the recommended budget is the estimated 9.3 million in special funds. Uh, we know, though, that this is something that shifts every year, and we'll be getting, we typically work with BBMR and, uh, revenue to get updated information kind of after, actually, the budget cycle to kind of see where we are with projected revenue, um, and refine that number as the year goes on. Um, but this is, you know, the projected revenue at this time. Service 749 does cover our, uh, Development Division's Acquisition, Disposition, and Asset Management. Um, it includes, uh, the funding that will increase, uh, positions specifically tied to, uh, reframe Baltimore and the, and our Vacants Reduction Strategy, um, as well as, uh, transferring services based on some of our reorganization that we did. Service 750 is our Housing Rehabilitation Services, so, uh, this is, um, increased funding to support a local... Within this service is our Lead Hazard Reduction Program, and we did need to increase some of our local match support for our federal HUD grant, um, which is located in this service. Service 751, the Building Code Permitting Inspections and Compliance. So you'll notice, uh, this is a, a name change for the service, uh, from previous years, and this is also where we're transferring three activities. So each service has sub-activities, we're transferring those three activities from Service 745 Code Enforcement to, uh, Building Code, to Service 751 as part of that reorganization. Also, we're transferring out of this service, the Office of the Zoning Administrator, and that is transferring to the Department of Planning. Service 752, our Community Outreach Services. Uh, this service actually encompasses, um, a number of different, uh, positions, and, um, also supports, uh, the team that is now a reorganized team, uh, for better efficiency. This is one of those items, we're looking for continuous improvement and how we can improve efficiency effectiveness for our residents. Um, this is where our Emergency Response Team and our Embusmen's Team, and Director Manago and, uh, Wright are, uh, within this and have, uh, been kind of leading our transformation and reorganization and rethinking over the last year, um, and actually a year and a half of, wow, echo, um, of our, uh, Crisis Service Management and our Fire Response Team, which moved actually previously from 745 into, uh, our Homeownership and Housing Preservation Division. That rounds us out with, uh, Summer Food Service Program. Um, right now continues to be fully funded, um, through Maryland State Department of Education, and continues to provide, uh, much-needed meals, uh, to our students and our youth 18 years and under throughout the summer. If you know of any site that would like to be a site for the summer, we still are accepting applications, and we can always new, use new sites to help ensure that we are able, uh, to provide that much-needed, uh, sustenance to our youth over the summer months. And with that, I, um, want to thank you, uh, for the opportunity again today to present to you all, and want to thank you, uh, for what I, um, anticipate will be a, um, wonderful, spirited, open dialogue for the next period of minutes, and possibly hours, that, that we are here. Thank you, I'm going to sit now.
Thank you, very spirited. Committee members, excuse me, all colleagues. Because I know that we have, um, a lot of questions. Everyone is, during each round, everyone will have up to three questions. I'm not going to limit you on any follow-ups for these three questions. However, I do ask that you remain centered to the question that you're following up on, um. And if it goes down a different path, um, I will nudge you to your next question or to the next council member. At this time, we're going to start with, um, Council President Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to also thank Councilmember Torrance, Chair of our Housing Committee, and Councilmember Ramos for leading the charge to address the city's permitting challenges. We cannot accomplish a renaissance, nor can we rehabilitate thousands of vacant homes if the permit system remains broken. On March 13th, the City Council held a hearing to address challenges with the city's permitting system. On the same day, the administration released their so-called Be More Fast Plan to accelerate development in the city, a key component being the speed and efficacy of the permitting system, which to date is a disaster. From that hearing, the administration committed to addressing two critical challenges, which are, one, the bottlenecks in the Fire Marshal's Office related to plans review, fire inspections. And two, the deep challenges with the new Acela e-permitting system. Last night, we heard from the Fire Department. They have made real progress addressing their permitting issues, adding additional positions to the plans review and inspections, and ensuring that the department is fully staffed. They've also commenced third-party review to expedite the most common and simple fire permits. We are very glad to see this progress and commend the chief on his work to resolve this serious and important issue. However, we continue to hear on an almost daily basis from developers, homeowners, architects, and others about the fact that the Acela system is wasting everyone's time and money and failing to produce even simple permits in a timely manner. Mr. Kennedy, can you tell me how you will fix this system? What are the steps you will take? And what is the date by which the system will work as, as advertised?
Uh, Council President, I, I want to thank you, um, for your comments, and, um, like you and others on the council, we are, um, frustrated with the status of where we are with the implementation of the system. As I mentioned in, um, you know, my opening remarks, we definitely understand that, and at times, sometimes, change, especially change at scale, is not, um, is not seamless, and that is part of what we are seeing, is, um, not seamless change. Now, we also take responsibility for that. Like I mentioned, there are some things that, um, we, you know, made some decisions on, like the Fast Track permit, that is, that is on us. We, we made a decision, we thought it would work through the workflow, it was tested through the workflow, and it is not working as it intended. So we are, um, pivoting with that, we're pivoting with BSIT and Acela. Um, and the goal is to have that Fast Track permit up by the end of, the end of June, um, with the, with, um, the data team at BSIT, as well as the vendor. There are additional challenges and additional workflow. The, we've been making adjustments, um, and continue to make adjustments. We've broken down, um, you know, these into categories. Like I mentioned, we have our intake backlogs, uh, customer service, as well as the permit review capacity, and then some of the workflow errors. We have hired additional staff. Um, since launch, we had actually additional permanent staff that started on, on the day of launch. Um, and then we've hired temp staff that has come in to assist, uh, with the backlog. Um, we also made a mistake and did not anticipate the volume of walk-ins that we would have, um, due to needing assistance, and some of them just wanting us to walk them through or apply for the permit on their own. Um, the walk-in traffic was a 200% increase in walk-in traffic. We pivoted during that time, we assigned other staff members from other divisions within the agency to the first floor to help with walk-in traffic, to help mitigate, to help move things through. This has been a constant turn of work on this. This isn't that we are sitting back and not doing anything, it's that there are some things that take a little bit more time, and there are some things that we were able to pivot on quickly and get resolved very quickly with Acela and BSIT. Um, we know that there is a path forward, we see that path forward. We have a list, um, that we've been tracking among those components in terms of what we can do for improvements on the system. We have prioritized that list based off of, um, feedback for, that we've gotten from many of you, from feedback that we've gotten from the development community, feedback that we've seen internally in terms of how to move this forward. Um, it is not perfect, we are making progress. We own that really, we own that issue. Um, we will continue to strive for operational excellence when it comes to this. We know the importance of the software component as part of the entire picture, and this isn't just about the software, this is about the entire picture. It's about the, the technology, the people, and the processes and the workflows. Um, and this ties into the larger component of Be More Fast associated, um, with those other components as well.
I appreciate what you're saying, but I do not have confidence that this agency is positioned to fix these problems. I'm going to ask the City Administrator for a meeting to occur within three weeks with DHCD, DOT, council members, the Fire Department, and permits czar, in advance of a hearing that we have coming up in July, to discuss what is wrong and what we need to do in clear, concrete steps to fix it. Uh, Madam City Administrator, could we work on establishing that?
Uh, absolutely, sir, thank you so much. Faith Leach, uh, Chief Administrative Officer for the City of Baltimore. During my hearing earlier this week, I committed to, um, uh, I committed to following up ahead of the next, um, committing, uh, the next council meeting on permits, to present to you all the plan that, um, that we will put in place to stabilize Acela. I mentioned to you all the work of, um, our Agile Tiger Team, um, which is going to be led by the Office of Performance and Innovation. And so it's going to be bringing together the technologists, as well as the civic designers through the Mayor's Office to work in partnership with BSIT, DACD, and all of the agencies. So what I am, um, committing to you today is that we will absolutely have a meeting, and at the time of that meeting, we will present to you a path forward for how we will stabilize, uh, the Acela system and address these issues, um, in a sustainable manner.
I really appreciate that. Um, Councilman Torrance, do you know what the date of our next hearing is?
July 15th.
July 15th, thank you. When, uh, when would give you enough time to pull that together?
Uh, can we, let's commit ourselves, um, to, uh, at, by the end of June, so we can, you and I can work together, and our staff can work together to identify a date. The, the Acela Tiger Team has already started, um, convening and meeting. They are building their project plan. I would like time for them to continue to deep dive into the technology issues, as well as the processes and the systems that the director talked about. And I want them to present to me an update that I am satisfied with. Um, and then, um, at such time, um, we will convene with you, but we will absolutely convene with you before the end of June, prior to the July hearing.
Councilman Torrance, does that timeline work for you?
Um, Mr. President, that totally is fine for me and the Vice, and the Vice Chair of the Committee for that time.
Great.
That gives us enough time. Um, if possible, if you provide the plan at least two weeks in advance, so that the committee could digest it and then make it meaningful.
So by July 1st, the plan by July 1st?
That would be perfect.
So plan and meeting by July 1st?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, my second question, I'm really proud that we have a City Council, a mayor, a governor, and a development community who all understand the urgency of eliminating vacancies and who are all committed to making it happen. In 2023, Mayor Scott announced a bold $3 billion plan to tackle vacant housing in Baltimore. The first tranche of the non-contiguous TIF is to be issued soon. Thank you to my colleagues for supporting that. The state has committed $50 million to eliminate vacant housing. The goal, the stated goal of the Baltimore Vacant Reinvestment Initiative is to rehab 5,000 vacant properties within five years. Unfortunately, what we have heard from many different stakeholders is a stunning lack of progress to date, despite the commitment of massive resources and time, and frankly, the political will of our mayor and this body. This is a critical inflection point for our city, and we cannot miss the opportunity to meet this moment. Please answer this question with a number. Madam Commissioner, how many redevelopments have occurred since the plan was announced in 2023?
Since, uh, 2023, so, I mean, we have, um... So what would be the start of fiscal year 20, well, the announcement was made in December of 2023. So I have, uh, you know, the number...
Since the announcement, how many, how many have we rehabbed?
Um, I would need to get additional data to break that down based on the announcement of December. I have the fiscal year 2023 and fiscal year 2024 reduction numbers. So we've done 773 vacant reductions in fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24, um, 632 reductions in vacants for those two fiscal years. And as of right now, um, as of the end of April, we're at 545, um, for the reduction in this fiscal year. We can...
And when we say reduction, does that mean that they were fully redeveloped? What, can you define...
That is the total reduction in vacant. So in partnership with the state, um, it's a focus on either demolition or, and/or, um, rehabilitation, with a majority of them being focused on for rehabilitation.
How many total have been rehabilitated, put back online, that someone's living there, or is in the process of being sold for someone to live in there?
I would need to get back with you to break out the number that has been rehabilitated during that timeframe. I can, unless we have...
Is there someone on your team that would have that number? I'm s, I'm sorry, can you please speak into the mic and introduce yourself? you please speak into the mic and introduce yourself?
Good afternoon, Council President Cohen. Kimberly Rubin's, Chief of Policy and Research for Baltimore City DHCD. In the past fiscal year, since, as of May 30th, 2025, so this fiscal year, there have been 908 VBNs abated via use and occupancy permit, which means 908 vacant buildings have been rehabbed and put back into productive reuse. And that is just in this past fiscal year. And that's just the data that I have on hand right here.
Okay, so-
So, and it, but it sounds like you're asking for a different time period.
Yeah, I, I'm looking for, from the start of this initiative, which I think you were defining as December 2023, how many homes have been redeveloped and are back online? I see the city administrator, maybe you could-
Yeah, no, absolutely. So what the team will do is, we will pull the data going back to December 23. But I did wanna clarify for the record, when the mayor made the announcement in December 23, the mayor was announcing, was announcing his intent to build a capital stack. At that point, the mayor did not announce that he was going to rehab 5,000 vacant properties. It has been through work with our partners, work through the BVRC, the delivery associates, for example, where we actually worked together to identify what it would take to, to actually eliminate vacant properties over the course of 15 years. So I just wanted to be clear that in December of 23, there was not an announcement about 5,000 as the goal, but we are happy to pull the data going back to December 23. In the data that we pull, Commissioner and team, let's identify the date that we started talking about, and that we identified what that target was, and we'll, you know, show you what has been done from that date moving forward. But the larger point here, I wanna acknowledge that we received that, is that there is concern from this body about the pace in which we are implementing the mayor's plan and the, the work of the BVRC. And what I will also offer is that this year's budget is the first very real investment of additional resources outside of capital into doing this work. So in the budget are 15, how many positions, Laura?
There's $1.2 million to create additional positions, and then we are annualizing the cost of positions that were created mid-year in fiscal '25. I believe there were 16 positions that were created for this initiative in fiscal '25.
Yep. So we, and just to put a finer point on this, so what we've been doing over the pat, now going into the second fiscal year, is actually building the capacity alongside building the capital stack. So now that we are about to have the TIF, the non-contiguous TIF dollars on the street this summer, we already have the dollars from the state, the BVRC dollars from the state that are moving. So the capital stack is moving on one side. And what we are now doing is building out the additional capacity on the DHCD side. So I anticipate that over the next fiscal years, over the next fiscal year, we will have more capacity, and you will start to see even, even more work done. But I will turn it over to the commissioner.
Yeah, and Madam Administrator, heard loud and clear, don't wanna conflate dates or data points or anything like that. And, you know, for me, I appreciate the mayor's vision on this, and I appreciate the upcoming infusion of resources, both from the state and now the city. Where I am disappointed, though, is in the execution of this plan. And I wanna be clear, this is not just feedback from this body. I think this is partners in state, this is the redevelopment community, this is our nonprofit advocacy community. I think there has been a consistent frustration at the speed at which this plan is moving. So again, while I appreciate the mayor's vision, I appreciate very much your commitment as reflected in this budget toward an infusion of resources. What I am contending is that to meet this moment where we are all serious about a Baltimore Renaissance, we have got to be urgent, we have got to be aggressive, and in terms of the actual turning over of houses, I have not seen it yet.
Yes. Thank you so much for that. And the commissioner can speak to the specific numbers. And again, I wanna acknowledge and receive the feedback from this body, as well as other stakeholders and partners. But I wanna be very clear about the mayor and this administration, and where we stand on this issue. The mayor has prioritized, and this is going to be the mayor's legacy, is addressing this issue for once and for all. We did not have the capacity at DHCD prior to, you know, last fiscal year and where we are now, to actually be able to do this work at scale. We did not have the resources and the funding in order to be able to do this work at scale. The thing that this body has heard from me, when it comes to any systems implementation or reform, and from the mayor, actually, is that we are going to do it right. So we're going to take the time to do this work in a way that is sustainable. The way you sustain this work is not just by cash. It's not, money isn't the problem. It isn't the only problem. It is systems, which Councilwoman Ramos points out. It is processes that, as the councilwoman always points out to DHCD, and it's also capacity. And so we have to be able to address all of those issues in order to do the ramp up. But what you will get from me, and the commissioner as well, is, and, and we have our dashboard, the BVRC dashboard, that is updated. It's real time, I think. And we can be sure to share the website with this body. But what we will do is, now that we have the additional capacity, we believe that we should start to see more productivity, and we'll, of course, be able to share that productivity with this body. I hear you loud and clear. You wanna see more properties put into productive use faster. You wanna see double the speed of where we are at, double the speed of demolitions, double the speed of renovations. And I wanna get us there, and I wanna get us there in a way that's sustainable.
I appreciate that. I'm gonna just close, and I very much appreciate the commitment to doing it right, instead of just doing it fast. But I think we need to do both. I think there is a moment and an opportunity right here, right now, where we have the strongest alignment since I've been around between the city and the state, our development community, advocates, the council, the, like, I have not seen this level of shared commitment to a goal, the GBC. I mean, I can build, I can go on and on and on. And if we squander this moment, it will be a massive miss on all of our parts. And so you have my commitment as the presiding officer of this body, that we are going to support resource requests, we are going to support whatever it is we need to get this done. But what I need to see is stronger processes, a stronger set of commitments around how to carry the work forward in a urgent and expeditious manner.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Chief Rubin, did you have something to add?
I'd like to add two pieces of information in response to President Cohen's comments. First, the total VBN rehab count during the time period requested is approximately 1,700 since December 2023. Second, on the BVRC-
Apologies, can you really say that number one more time?
1,700.
Keep going, sorry.
President Cohen, you made a comment about the need to do this work quickly and well. And the, I'm happy, we are, we can definitely share this with your office directly, but on the BVRC website is a 130-slide deck that outlines our delivery plan to be able to execute this work expeditiously. So we are thinking about this, and we are doing this, and we are actively engaged in improving our processes each and every day. It's why I work alongside my colleague, Ms. Zepner, and all of my colleagues.
I, I appreciate that. I have always known you to be someone who is deeply engaged and committed in this work, but I do not need a 130-slide deck to tell me that we are not moving fast enough in this process. And that is a concern that I am sharing on behalf of this body, but I am telling you, is shared among several of our partners and stakeholders outside of this body as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Vice President Middleton.
Okay. First of all, I just wanna, just start off thanking your department for all the work you continue to do. It is one of the largest departments in the city, and it's just so many different angles and, and things that are just so important. Housing and community development is the most important thing as we're moving forward in this city, as Council President has mentioned. But I'm gonna just go ahead into my two questions. And since you did bring up that Acela system, that was one of my questions that I'll just go ahead, because you did say you wanted constructive feedback and criticism. And so lately, residents have been calling into my office, I guess, about this system. And I think, and this is just feedback that I guess can help, you know, they'll go into the system and fill out the permit application, and then find out that the contractor needs to be added. And right off, that builds frustration, and it's not user-friendly. And of course, then they're gonna call the council person, and then it just takes off that way. So I don't, and then, of course, you know, we've had our frustrations with Workday for many, many years. So all these systems are just, you know, they're bothersome, and we know it's difficult, but I, I just, you know, sometimes you just have to maybe stop the complete system and rethink. And I've been in state government where that happened. So I don't know if it's come to that point, but just constructive feedback, as we're starting to get more people calling to our office frustrated, and we have to calm them down. I don't know if you wanna comment on that question, on that comment?
Councilman, thank you for your comments and your, your feedback. For the contractor piece, the system does require, for certain work, that a contractor be listed. And this is, is not a new change. This, this existed in the, in the prior system. And in fact, in many cases, homeowners could not apply for a permit. They had to, they were dependent on their contractor under the old system to apply for the permit on their behalf. This new system does open up a lot more freedom, in the sense that the homeowner can apply for the permit themselves, and they can, and they have the ability to add the contract, contractor to it. And, and so it is, it's a change, and it's something that people need to get used to. It is in our training materials, which are online, under the permit like a pro, on how to add the contractor. And then there are some safeguards built in where the contractor is notified via email anytime that they are added to a permit that gets issued, so that nobody is out there trying to do work without having the proper contractor required under the code. So-
Are you having work sessions set up?
Yes.
In communities to help with this?
We, we held a number of work sessions before launch, during launch, and we've had some after launch. We are now setting up smaller sessions. They're gonna be like 10 to 20 people, where instead of going through a slide deck and saying, this is how you do it, we will actually work somebody processing a permit, like, with the group of people in real time, so that people have the experience of actually doing a permit instead of just hearing how it's done. But for those that are looking for materials on the permitting process, we do have full videos of all the, of the training materials in English and Spanish. We have the PowerPoints. Then we have something like 20 short guides. And then on, on key things that came up, we did some short videos, under two minutes, how to pay, you know, how to find the pay link. Just a real quick, short, two-minute video to, you know, where, where people don't wanna have to read a document or scan through a slide deck. They can just click on that, that video and, and get that quick how-to. And so their plans is, as those issues arise, to do more of those types of, of videos and additional materials as needed. But I think the training sessions will be starting in the next week or two, and people will be able to reserve a spot and come in and do that one-on-one, not one-on-one, but small group, real-time application creation.
Please make sure you give us that information-
We will.
-so we can help spread the word. And then my second question, how does the budget address vulnerable populations, including older adults, individuals with disabilities, and low-income families in terms of housing and support services?
Council Vice President, I appreciate that question. I know that that is an area that we both have shared an interest in for a number of years. You know, we assist our older adults and our vulnerable population through, a lot through our Division of Homeownership and Housing Preservation, which covers in terms of our Service 750, which is our housing rehabilitation services, as well as the, our, our crisis management team and services team as well. So we continue to offer homeownership repair assistance. The team has done some realignment on the Light Intake and Assessment Unit to help better address some of the service components to that, especially to around phone, phone calls, intake, and along those lines. They've reorganized the staffing within that division for intake and assessment, and are also reorganizing and adding positions on the rehab side to help be able to move, specifically, our housing upgrades to benefit seniors cases a little bit, move them through faster. We do know that this is a key population. It's a key component in terms of being able to assist them as, as fast as we can, and to deploy what resources we have as, as fast as we can. And the team has done a great job. We have Assistant Commissioner Brooke Paluzzi on, that assists with Deputy Commissioner Hart. Brooke actually came from Civic Works, from our main partner on the Housing Upgrades to Benefit Seniors program, and is now using that skill in terms of bringing that to city government, and increasing coordination, as well as execution of those programs.
Thank you. And just to add, the homeowner repair piece is just so important, and it replenishes too quickly. So I'm hoping that funding will be, you know, additional funding is looked at and will be added to that, to that piece, because that's, you know, our, it, it's one of the most important pieces, as we are revitalizing and wanna keep people here that have had homes for many, many years, but need that little extra help. Thank you. I'll stop there, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Regotten, Service 742, how, how does your agency define low and moderate income?
Low and moderate income is defined at 80% area meeting income and below. That specifically goes to support our first-time homebuyer program, which is funded 100% by community development, black grant funds. And we also, a, a lot of the residents that apply for homeowner incentive programs also apply for the first-time homebuyer, and they may also apply for a couple of our other incentive programs as well.
What is, what is, what is that, like, the salary range for, for low and moderate is, is what I'm getting at? I'm sorry if you said I, I didn't hear you.
No, that's okay. Do we have the updated, Nicole Hart, Deputy Commissioner Hart's gonna get the updated range for you for-
Okay.
-our 80%.
While Deputy Hart is, is getting that information, I'm saying that because I'm, I wanna understand why the outcome for the percentage of the incentives that you're providing to low and moderate income home buyers. I just wanna understand why the target for FY '26- moderate income home buyers, I just want to understand why the target for FY26 is at 60%.
That actually is an increase off of our fiscal year '25 target. So we have increased that target consistently over the last several years. It continues to be a priority to hit the low and moderate income. There are a couple of the programs that are administered through that, through Service 742, like the Buy In to Be More program in partnership with Live Baltimore that does not have a income restricted limit or income cap. So we do try to take in consideration some of the percent of funds that are not tied to that, as well as like the Live Near Work program, grant program as well.
I guess I would say because in FY2024, the actual was 93%. And I know that it's constantly going up. So I understand that we want to, realistic, but for me, it just seems like it should be higher, especially when this is built around retention, likely of legacy residents. I know that a large portion of this is looped into the middle neighborhood strategy. So I guess I want to see a metric that's, that's higher than 60%.
I can understand and appreciate that completely. Also, it's tied in part to our CDBG allocation. We can commit, I'll go back with the team, we'll reevaluate the numbers and the dollars and see how best to move to get that target higher, especially for fiscal year '27 as we go into it.
Yeah, because you, you guys crushed it in 2024 and I'm pretty sure when we get the actuals for 2025, you may have done it as well. So I think that that should be reflected. Did Deputy Hart have that information? Okay.
So for a family of one, the maximum annual income is $62,600. So a family of two, it would be $71,500. And it goes up, so basically a family of eight, the maximum income is $118,050. And I just want to add that we did add 1.5 million additional funds to first-time homebuyers that was just launched in April. So we did add money that for FY25 as well. I'm sorry, it was 2 million, not 1.5.
I got you, Deputy Hart. I understood you. I would love to see not a realistic, not like, I don't want to say realistic, I think you guys are already going beyond this and you're consistently hitting above it. So I would just like to see it reflected within the numbers that we're using. We're going to go to Councilwoman Gray.
Thank you, Chair. First, I just want to say thank you for all you do, housing-related, code enforcement-related, permit-related. I pretty much email or text or call somebody from DHCD twice a week, if not more. So I appreciate you guys always being, being there. Well, not to speak of my team, but just me personally. So in fiscal year '24, legal aid supported 2,148 individuals in housing-related matters involving landlord-tenant cases. The allocation of the funding seems extremely limiting to how many individuals are supported versus how many need the support. What is the source of the funds for this program and what outcomes do you expect with such limited budgeting? And so, yeah, well, we can start there first and then I'll have a follow-up to that.
I want to, Councilwoman, be clear, did you mention Maryland Legal Aid as the agency, the nonprofit agency and their support?
Yes.
Excellent. So we actually are increasing Maryland Legal Aid's support for fiscal year '25 through our community development block grant funding through an additional $420,000 for Maryland Legal Aid to continue to increase their assistance for vulnerable residents through eviction prevention, right to counsel, and other necessary legal needs.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's really important because I know in our office, we receive a lot of, because of not only just the apartment complexes, sometimes the nature of the apartment complexes and the difficulty we have with certain owners. We have a lot of cases and oftentimes, somebody from our office will literally go to court with, you know, said individual to make sure that, you know, they, they're heard and they know how to be represented and how to stand up for themselves. So it's really important that we do allocate more funds to make sure that, one, we're supporting, we're giving people the housing support that they need, but giving them the right to fight for their tenant rights that they need because not everyone's going to be a homeowner. My next question is, code enforcement budget has decreased significantly in FY26 and a number of code enforcement activities have been transferred to the building code permitting, inspections, and compliance. How does it impact the efficiency of the code enforcement and the city overall consisting, considering that the existing issues within the permit department that we have? And ultimately, we really rely on the folks in code enforcement to make sure that our, that, you know, a lot of our residents are doing the right thing.
No, that's a great question. Like I mentioned in the opening remarks, the shift is basically aligning services within divisions. I'll let, I'll actually turn it over to Deputy Commissioner Hessler and Deputy Booker, but I can assure you that the move of staff actually aligns where they were in the, you know, our notice production was in 745, but it actually aligns in terms of the division and the organizational chart and where they go in 751.
So just to be clear, we're not losing anyone, it's just a reclassification?
Could, could I? Councilwoman Gray, Scott Davis, Chief of Staff at DHCD. So within our agency operationally, we are organized into five operational divisions. They have, for the most part, alignment with our different budget services. The Housing and Code Enforcement Service was from back when the Permits and Litigation Division under Deputy Hessler and the Code Enforcement Division under Deputy Booker were one division. So all, all that we did were the services or the call centers that connect with the offices that sit within the Permits and Litigation Division are simply moved to Service 751, which is where the rest of the budget for our Permits and Litigation Division sits. And so all of the staff, all of the, you know, budget is the same. It is just now being moved from 745 to 751.
Okay, I appreciate that because my worry is someone puts in a 3-1-1 and we're so focused on making sure that the houses that are being built are, are being inspected, that the issues that are persisting in our neighborhoods are being ignored. And I would hate to have to keep calling the sheats over and over and over again.
Yeah, you would, Councilman, you won't see any change in those services. We're continuing the operations. It's the same staff, it's just realigning the paperwork.
Okay, perfect. So I keep McGinnis and everyone else because everyone, everyone does a great job. I just want to make sure we aren't losing some of the folks that we are so used to working with that are doing a phenomenal job, so.
And Councilman, just to that point, all we're doing, as Deputy Hessler said, is aligning the paperwork with where those people sit operationally. So all of the offices that you know, that you work with are staying the same. This is just to align the budget more closely with how we as an agency operationally are organized.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I don't know if you guys have any follow-up, I don't know if there's any need, okay. So the Emergency Mortgage and Housing Assistance Program assists Baltimore residents at the risk of losing their home due to economic hardship. In the past, the city has designated $2 million in funding this program, but FY26, the allocation is $166,352. Is this accurate? And if so, how does this reduction in this service align with the city's comprehensive vacant reduction and prevention strategy?
Deputy Commissioner Hart?
So, so you're correct. We just launched, relaunched Emergency Mortgage and Homeowner Assistance with the $2 million. And so we anticipate that some of that may carry over into FY26 because it just launched in March, I mean, in April, April 8th. We just launched that 2 million. And then we, and then $500,000 was allocated for FY26. The goal is actually, we're actually, what we're seeing is we're clearing a lot of arrears for people that will hopefully, hopefully get them back on track, that we won't have to still spend at that high number. We work diligently, I will say we work diligently with our CDBG staff to advocate for any funds that can be added. And we are actively applying for grants through the, through the state to be able to increase rental assistance.
So with the money that is anticipated to be rolled over, when will you have the exact, like, count of that?
After June 30th.
That is a long budget committee request, but I would love to have those numbers at the top of the fiscal year. So if I can make that a committee request, that we have the, the exact number of what is being carried over and will be reallocated to the fiscal 2026 budget because I think this is a really important program to have. As you guys know, it's, people rely on this a lot. And so I just want to make sure that we have the funding needed to support the people that need it. And I think with that, I'm done my questions for this round, but once again, I just want to thank you guys and everything that you, and for everything that you guys do for the city and really changing the narrative through housing of what Baltimore is.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for answering the multiple emails from all of us and for your commitment to the city. I have a lot of questions, but I just want to start by agreeing with my colleague, Council President, on the utter frustration that we have with the, with the permit office. And that that was, it is, as, excuse me, as you know, is such a critical piece that if we do not get that right, everything else with our vacancy strategy, with our homeowner repairs, everything else is going to fail, period. And so it's extremely important that we get that right. It sounds like with the city administrator and your commitment to, to really think through what, what happened here. And I guess I just kind of wonder, before I start into my formal questions, I mean, obviously, the department worked on this for two years. We had been asking for some sort of reform for a long time since I've been a councilwoman and, a long time, a few years. And you even came to us and said, we're going to need another year to get this right. And it still didn't get right. So I'm kind of wondering, was there any point in that time when, as you were getting closer to the launch, that said, hold on a second, this isn't going to work, we need to come back and tell the council we need more time? Because we put, we would have done that rather than having a disastrous launch, which is now eroding the, you know, confidence in our city, but more importantly, we're getting rehabs done without permits. And that compromises the health and safety of our, of our residents. And if you had a hesitation, why not just come to us and say, wait, you can't, we can't do this?
That's an excellent, excellent question. And I think that there are a couple of different things that went into the decision to move head, move ahead and launch. We had completed a significant amount of testing. There could have been more testing. We were also balancing that with, at the time, the potential catastrophic failure of the existing system, which did play into this in terms of trying to like look at that speed and where things kind of fell and where they played out. I think that at this point, you know, the focus is on what are we doing now to move forward? And, you know, can go back, we've evaluated some of those decision points. We evaluated the decision point on the fast track, which is one of those things, like with any good kind of operations, you want to evaluate kind of the pain points, what happened, where did things go wrong, what could we have caught, what actually is just in a matter of not catching until the system is in place and moving and rolling. So I, you know, want to focus on what we're doing now. We've significantly identified, you know, the different kind of problems. We've, you know, identified different solutions that either have already been put in place or are, are coming as part of that. And, you know, this is not another year-long or too long, two-year-long, you know, process with these fixes. The CA committed to have the meeting and so forth and actively working with the Tiger Team and actively moving forward.
Thank you. I guess within that, I had asked at the time for, you know, making sure that there was a, a real evaluation, not just of the technology, but of workflows and inspection times and capacity and, you know, all of that. And I don't know whether that actually happened or if we were just relying on a technological fix. And that is concerning because it, we knew that it wasn't going to be just a technological fix to address some of the issues that were happening in the previous permit office.
Yeah, we weren't relying on just the technology as the fix.
Well, I do remember that you've said several times, this will fix all of the new system.
I, I don't remember saying it would fix all of the problems because a lot of the things that we did in terms of analysis of needs of changes went into the creation of Be More Fast as related to looking at permitting in Baltimore as a whole. It definitely would not fix all of the problems. And I don't remember saying that and I don't think I would have. What we did know is that the hope on certain components of this system in terms of some of the backend user capacity, some of the data reporting capacity, the other components that the software itself brings, would provide additional ease of use and so forth. We did look at things around staffing. We did look at things around some of the call centers. It's one reason why we put the call center up and started that even previous to the launch of the system. So I definitely will own and we will take responsibility for the key components. And there was, you know, evaluation of not just the software, but also the whole kind of system as a whole and what is needed there to make that, you know, be able to change. There are some challenges that we do have in terms of staffing. We have some open positions for mechanical and electrical review that, you know, unfortunately, we have not yet been able to fill. We had some interviews and no one accepted the position. That is a challenge, but it doesn't mean that we're not figuring out other ways to address that and see what needs to change to make this an attractive, you know, position that we have qualified people to work in. And that's not an excuse, it's, it's saying we are looking at all of the different pieces of this puzzle.
I appreciate that.
If you mind, for me, for the record, Justin Williams, Deputy Mayor for Community Economic Development, like Councilman Conway is a former city staff person. So I decided to come in two and a half years ago with, and do permits data. And we were chomping for the bit to get data, to do a database analysis of the permit system. But the old system didn't have the ability to do the data that we needed to have to show where the bottlenecks were because permits were kind of all together and there was no easy way to pull out where the choke points were. I've seen, we've actually been on emails together where I've been able to see now with ECNR system for stormwater management reviews, where we can see the back and forth and see that it's been the reviewer and the applicant and the delays and the timelines. I'm excited to be able to do that with Acela once we're up and running. So that will allow some of the more unique choke point review and figure out, hey, where's the bottleneck? Is it a staff, individual, staff person ability problem? Is it they are too busy? Is it the applicant? Is it a process because we are badly informing the public about what needs to be added? Now we'll get that information to do that work.
Right, well, I've seen that, well, I have seen snapshot, screenshots of the backend, which has been helpful. And obviously, there is, you know, there's, there's some times where, you know, contractors are skipping steps and they're saying they've been waiting forever and they just filed it last week. I get that, we're on the same page there. But we want to make sure that, you know, and hopefully with the, since you're getting that data from the Acela system, that it helps with figuring out where those choke points are and what can be done. But that's within the system. There's all kinds of other things that have to happen before, in the middle, and afterwards to really make it, to make it work. So hopefully, we're, when we're looking at it, not just through the lens of, So hopefully we're, when we're looking at it, not just through the lens of, of, um, of, uh, there's so many, uh, names of programs, but of the, um, Be More Fast that, because Be More Fast, to me, it sounded like it was much more of a, you know, bringing in, you know, liquor board and bringing in Right Away and bringing in DPW and bringing in kind of more of the other pieces that somebody has to go through, um, in one way, it, so that it's easier for everybody to maneuver, as opposed to what we were hoping the per, permit office would be, which was, you know, a, a complete office that had everything that you needed. You could go in or you could do it online and get what you needed in a reasonable amount of time, um, which is not what we got.
Well, I mean, I, I view it as one and the same for Be More Fast, that as part of the whole system review, it's getting a permit more easily. So it permits are entirely within HCD, that's part of the Be More Fast review and making it, doing faster approvals and student learning timelines is the acronym for fast. And that's what we want to do, it's just taking time to get there with the Sella. But now with the database analysis, we can do that data and say, hey, here is where the choke point is, as opposed to speculating or just kind of guessing based on anecdotes.
Thank you. Um, so I'll move on to another topic. Um, I, um, the, I want to get a, a better sense of the staffing, um, on both the INREM and also on disposition. I, I will say, it's been a real honor to work with the team and with you Commissioner and the city administrator and the city solicitor and BVRC on, on making sure that INREM works. It is the game changer that we needed, um, to make sure that we are, uh, acquiring vacant and abandoned properties away from the people that have not been paying the taxes and that are not, um, that may not even, uh, be around anymore. And, uh, I know that we have, and also the courts, the courts have played a big role and I look forward to talking with them next week. Um, and so, uh, I want to just talk a little bit about the staffing for INREM, um, and then also the disposition. The, the acquisitions that we've already seen with INREM are pretty incredible, I have to say. I mean, every, all of the, for the benefit of the council, um, uh, the block that I talk about all the time, because it's my favorite block, the 1600 block of Gorsuch Avenue, we have acquired, um, most of the vacant properties on that block through INREM in about 18 months, which is like lightning speed compared to what we used to do, because the process is literally six to eight months per house. Um, and I ha, I, I write very extensive letters to the BVRC and I have a whole description about how this works. So I'm not gonna go through it, you all can read. Um, but we do know that this is a game-changing, uh, and we should be just doing all of our acquisition, um, that we can, that what's eligible for INREM to, to do. So can you talk first about the, um, the staffing? Are these new positions that, uh, are in the budget for INREM? Um, are the 16 that were mid-year positions for INREM, what, which were the ones that, just trying to get a sense of the staffing?
Yeah, I'm gonna, um, turn it over to Deputy Redfern and, um, Assistant Commissioner Kirchner. Um, they'll talk about like where we are in terms of the attorneys and, and INREM attorneys. I can say that, um, the funding for fiscal year '26 is specifically in conversations with Deputy Redfern. That will be focused on the real estate agents to continue to bolster the disposition. Uh, yeah, that will, uh, bolster the disposition side. Um, we are and have exceeded already our fiscal year '25 goal for dispositions, um, and are over, we're almost at 170, 169, and that we're holding a significant number of properties right now as part of the RFQ process.
Um, before we go to Deputy Redfern, uh, of those 16 positions, five of those were attorney positions, uh, for INREM or within the development division, uh, within their division, they have a few title attorneys, while the majority of the attorneys are the filing attorneys. Uh, and then there were also two paralegals, uh, that were part of that set of, um, positions that were, uh, the 16 that were referred to.
So out of the 16 mid-year positions that were created, five of them were INREM attorneys, two of them were paralegals?
Correct.
So that leaves, uh, nine more.
So that was a combination of, um, positions across the agency, primarily within the development division. There were two real estate agent ones. Uh, there was the position for our new, um, Chief of Implementation and Innovation, Mary Colleen Bitner, who is here. Uh, and there were a few more I don't want to speak, um, off. Uh, I don't, I have most of it memorized in my head, but not all of it, so I wouldn't want to give you the wrong position. But all of the positions that were created were to support the ecosystem of this work that needs to happen.
And then the 13 that are adding, being added?
Uh, so with the, um, additional enhancement, uh, that is being put into the budget, we are still finalizing discussions with, um, with internal as to what positions we most need right now. Um, as the Commissioner said, there is a focus on, um, a need for additional real estate agents for disposition.
So I did read the, um, Delivery Associates 130-page stack, which did talk about staffing levels needed and performance. Um, it didn't go to workflows, which is something that we're dealing with at the BVRC workgroup that I'm in. Um, so, uh, we, what I'm gonna ask for a data request is for the clarification on the 16 mid-year positions, um, but then also, uh, you know, what these 13 are gonna be added, um, to, to do within the strategy, um, uh, based on what I think you're using as your guidepost, which is the Delivery Associates report. Um, and, uh, that way we can get a better sense of what the capacity that you're trying to build, um, is. And I, I always follow up with an email on my data request, so I will do that. Um, and then, uh, so for disposition, the, uh, when we, when the, the fixed pricing was announced, uh, last year, two years, last year, uh, the, my understanding was that there would be disposition of properties, um, within 90 days was the goal. Uh, and your slides talk about 120 days being the goal instead of 90 days. Uh, and I know that the two properties that we just, uh, gave to, um, the developer who's doing the 1600 block of Gorsuch, it took, you know, eight months. Um, so it's great that we are acquiring these properties. Um, and I will just have to back up and, and make sure that my colleagues know that of the 1700 that, um, were talked about in terms of rehabs over the last two years, about 80%, 85% of that is private, private transactions privately done. Um, we have to take a better, stronger role, which I believe is what we're, why we're taking a stronger role on INREM, to really try to deal with these properties that it's hard to get any, anybody's not gonna buy them because they have so much in taxes. Um, so the performance really is about not just making sure that people can, can rehab these properties on the private market, but also that we're wrestling with the ones that are the hardest to get. And then once we have them, making sure they get into the hands of the person who's gonna do something with them and do it quickly. Um, and so that's why I want to really start thinking about the disposition side and if we're meeting those 90 days, if we're going back and saying 120 days, uh, and what the capacity is needed to, to get to those goals. Because I don't want to have people waiting, uh, for so long. And I get the difference between sort of the scatter site work and also, you know, like we're doing on the 1600 block of Gorsuch, we're kind of holding those for Mr. Morris to be ready, um, to be able to do what needs to be done. And that's true for the other whole blocks. Um, but I just, you know, it shouldn't take eight months to get, um, Mr. Morris's properties.
No, I agree, um, in terms of Mr. Morris. And I think that there were a couple of different pieces there, um, going back and forth with him a little bit on some of the preparation piece that came into play ahead of time. Um, I'll let Deputy Commissioner Redfern talk a little bit more about the, um, just disposition timeline and kind of clarity to around, you know, 90 days from, um, you know, approval to, uh, Board of Estimates versus application, like receipt of application, et cetera.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman. So the disposition process generally takes 90 days or it, 120 days is also considered, I think, the standard, which is just a month longer. We have those timelines in place because it's not always easy for us to determine when we're gonna get through the Board of Estimates. That's not to say that there's anything wrong, but it's the way, the flow of the work. And there are a number of people that have to touch the work in order to get it to the Board.
Um, the, I thought that there was a permanent item on the, uh, agenda, the Board of Estimates agenda, to be able to put these properties on immediately, so it should
It is.
make the prop, make it go faster.
That does make it go faster, but there are still a number of people that have to touch the property, to touch the work in order to get it there. And so that's all I'm explaining is that, that differentiation between the 90 and the 120.
And do you have the capacity you need in your office to do the, what we're asking in terms of the goals for, for disposition?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we are still growing our capacity in that way and we're pivoting somewhat, right? As we continue or move forward and up our acquisition, um, activity, we have to also balance our disposition activity. Currently, we have the same set of people, real estate agents, that handle that work. And so we do need to increase a little bit so that we can maintain the timelines and the, I guess, the numbers that we want to as far as disposition and increase, uh, acquisition activity as well.
So do you have an ideal number that you're trying to get to in terms of staffing, or you don't know yet?
I don't have an ideal number, but I do know that we are currently recruiting for, uh, two additional real estate agents.
Mm-hmm. Um, okay. So I think that, um, you know, the, the disposition side, I, I focus a lot on, um, acquisition just because it's so critical to the work, but the disposition side is equally, you know, as important in terms of... So the, the Be More, uh, buying to Be More website no longer has properties on it for folks?
Correct. And so the reason for that is because we are in the middle of a reconfiguration or maintenance on, from that perspective, right? We have a number of properties that are coming into the pipeline, like you've just, uh, stated. We also have a number of, uh, RFQs that are on the street to type, to try to get a better, more streamlined approach to our disposition. And so in order not to have conflict with what we have out right now and what we're anticipating to be able to award, we've had to take a pause on the website. But that will soon change, it's soon, very likely, very soon.
I appreciate that. And I, I will just end my time here with this, that, um, the, the question about, there's several programs that are on the website and Charms Any Roots is just confusing everybody. Can we take all those down, please?
Agreed.
And start over with that, because it's very much, very confusing.
So we are currently looking at that to make sure that it's streamlined as well.
Okay, thank, thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Commissioner, really good to see you. Um, first, before I jump into anything, want to thank you guys for all the great work that you're doing. I know your team works incredibly hard and you guys are incredibly smart and are trying to solve some of the biggest problems that the city has had for decades upon decades upon decades. Uh, I really appreciate the work you guys are doing and it's, it's inspiring. Um, I do have to acknowledge we are having operational challenges right now, as you've, uh, alluded to, especially with, uh, permits. And I, I do agree with the, uh, Mr. President, um, we, we need to do everything that we can as quickly as possible to address that issue. I'll tell you today, that's probably the, the issue, the complaint that I probably hear the most, um, when I'm just kind of checking in on folks and seeing how they think things are going. Um, so anything that we can do to address that, I know you guys are super wicked smart, we'll figure it out. Um, but as soon as possible, I think is, is really, really, really important. So I just want to re-echo, um, that statement. Um, to that effect, I kind of just want to follow up on, uh, one small piece here, um, about the permits question. I noted in the, um, performance measures for the total number of permits issued, uh, that there's actually a decrease from our actual numbers in 2024 to the targets for 2026. Um, and 2023, we had 40,615 permits issued. In 2024, we had 41,923 permits issued. Uh, the target for 2025 and 2026 is at, uh, 40,000 and 45, uh, 40,500 respectively. Um, curious why we decided to undershoot for those efforts. I would imagine with, um, what we're trying to do here, um, on one hand, we would expect that those numbers might be in the same world. Um, but two, I know, we all know, there's a lot of unpermitted work going on and I'm curious what we're doing to that effect to, um, make it easier. Or, I'm, of course, we're obviously trying to make it easier, but, um, advertise, incentivize, encourage, enforce where necessary, uh, folks to actually get permits going forward. So can, if you can give me some insight there, that'd be helpful.
Absolutely. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Deputy Commissioner Hessler to talk about some of the targets.
The, um, permit targets are set based off a three-year average of actuals, so that's where you see that decrease. Um, that's what we base it off of. It's a difficult metric because, um, you know, it is very dependent on what our office does. It's dependent on, you know, the public pooling permits for work that's being performed. Uh, but then it's also extremely dependent on the market and, and what happens out there. And so, um, you know, that's, you know, the best way to do it that we've found is just to do that three-year average to make sure that things are, are, um, on par with, you know, the prior years. And it is an indicator that other agencies and the state uses, and the nation uses, um, in what's happening out in the real world as far as, you know, is there construction going on? In relation to the question about unpermitted work, um, yes, it, it does happen out there. We respond to 311 complaints on a daily basis. Um, we have a, um, set of protocols set up that I think are pretty, pretty stringent, um, and stiff as far as enforcement goes, that, you know, if we're catching someone that is doing work without a permit, they get a stop work order, uh, they get a violation notice for that stop work order that requires them to, to correct it. They get a $500 citation, which is a lien on the property. And if that $500 citation is not, um, paid within 90 days or a hearing requested, then it triples to $1,500 before it becomes that lien on the property. Uh, and then there is a surcharge that is added to the permit cost, which is at a minimum $1,000. Um, the majority of, of the work that is caught, it ends up being a $1,000 surcharge. Um, and that gets paid when the person gets the permit for the work. Um, so it is very costly if you get caught doing work without a permit. Um, and we've had contractors come in and, you know, I've, I've talked with them as they plead their case as to, you know, it was their first time, they will never do it again, those kinds of things, they've learned their lesson. Um, yeah, we do have a due process for the, all those things, so people can appeal their citations, they can challenge their surcharge. Um, but when that gets to the contractor, the majority of them learn their lesson and, you know, won't do work without a permit in the future. Um, so...
Can, can I make a recommendation here? Um, I, I, I think it's great that we enforce, I think it's great that we go out and seek. It's effectively a game of whack-a-mole, uh, we catch people when we can. Most people inevitably don't get caught, which is why people continue to do it. Um, I wonder, um, if it might be worth us considering, at least for the folks that we have caught, um, finding some way to encourage them to do it the right way, maybe helping them through their next permit, um, doing some sort of coaching of sorts so that, um, the next time they do it, we know that they're doing it. I mean, we, I'm sure we have a list right now of all the people that we find. So I would suspect those are the people who are continuing to do unpermitted work and they just hope that they don't get caught. Um, so, you know, I think the, of course, from a public safety perspective, I'm always thinking about the, the carrot and the stick. You gave me a lot of stick and, and I think that's great. Uh, we gotta figure out what the carrot can be here and how we can support people in navigating what can sometimes be a pretty, um, onerous, uh, permitting system. So it's just a recommendation.
Sure, and if I may, um, we, in this budget, we have a, um, Training Director position. It's a new position for the Permits Litigation Section. Um, and it was really envisioned to do three, um, tasks, three broad tasks. One is, is the training of, of the staff that are working in the permitting inspection system. Um, the second is to stay up on, um, legislative changes that happen locally, nationally. Um, and then the third one is public education. Um, and that public education piece is really seen kind of in two different ways. One is exactly... One is exactly how you're talking, where, um, we see a group that isn't doing something right and reaching out to them in particular. Another was, um, with Councilwoman Ramos, um, where we had the, the fire, um, on Kezwick. And reaching out to the public on incidents like that, where we can, um, either target education, um, to a specific area because of the housing stock or things that we see there, or to the broader, um, and not step on the fire department or anybody else's toes, but, you know, like, do like a PSA on smoke detectors, do a PSA on carbon detectors, do a PSA on fire stopping your attic, if you're in a block that has an open attic. Um, different things like that, that are very particular to Baltimore that people may not know. Even just servicing your HVAC, make sure you change your filters. Um, those types of things, in addition to making sure our staff are up to date on the different codes, you know, if there's complaints we're getting about particular things, doing trainings on those, um, yeah. So thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah. Um, uh, the, my, 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 my next question here is, um, around, um, uh, code enforcement inspectors. So, um, last year, when we were having this conversation, we were looking at a bunch of vacancies. It looks like we've reduced, reduced that pretty significantly. Looks like we only have, is that, um, eight or 10? How many vacancies do we have today? For, uh, code inspectors?
I can just tell you what we have in the pipeline right now.
I swear I wasn't trying to catch you guys off guard.
Yeah.
The, the problem with having so many prep materials.
There are 22.
22, alright. Maybe we're still in the same world. Um, I, 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 oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
I would, I would just say that, um, there are 22, but actually, for the first time, um, the, for the first time in my tenure and actually in history, I think, going back for years, which in at least a decade within DHCD, we have a path forward, uh, to fill all of those positions, um, within code enforcement. So a number of them are actually under recruitment now. Um, and, uh, you know, Deputy Booker can talk about, uh, the creation of the sanitation team that we're using with those positions as well. Um, and there are a couple that are being held for promotional opportunities. That was one of the, um, key things that we heard in terms of staff feedback, um, is just oper, you know, opportunity for growth within the agency and the city. Um, so those are being held, but I'll, um, go through with Deputy Booker, um, the number that is hired on that, and we have a number that are already in process.
Yeah, we, um, we got seven on the way in the door. We have eight that are in process. So out of that 22, we have 15, 15 that's moving. Um, seven should be coming in the door in short order and the other eight are in process. So we're, um, filling those positions.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you. I, um, it, it, that wasn't my question, but if you guys, uh, what is the timeline to get those 15 or so in? If we can get an update, um?
Seven are always, almost in the door. Okay, they've, they're doing background check stuff, so if they don't get kicked out of background, they should be in the door within another two pay periods at most. The other ones are just starting to QR, the, um, OPR?
They're posted.
Yeah, they're posted. They're posted to, to be filled, yeah.
Um, yeah, so we actually, so the housing inspector position was posted and closed, uh, this, let me get my dates right, Wednesday, uh, and the housing inspector senior position closed, uh, on the 20th last week. Um, as of when we talked yesterday, uh, we were still waiting on DHR to refer those lists over to, um, the team.
I, I appreciate that. That, um, I'm sorry to go down that rabbit hole, that wasn't even my question, but what I will say, um, it, it would be helpful maybe in 30 days to see how the seven play out, um, and, and maybe in three months to follow up to see how, excuse me, the eight play out and then the seven thereafter, maybe in another three months. Uh, I'd be curious, cause I know we've been trying to fill those positions for quite some time. And I, I see our code inspectors as, especially in areas where we have significant blight, our very first step, our sort of frontline defense, uh, on addressing those issues, uh, which leads me to my question. Um, so, uh, I was recently doing a, a neighborhood walk just last week in Woodbury McCabe, uh, the 500 block of Sheridan. I've been really focusing on that block. And, um, one of the instances that I saw there was a handful, but one in particular vacant that we noted, um, had been acquired by the city and then transferred to a developer that had done nothing for, for 18 months, had pulled no permits. Um, and so, um, what I'm seeing in some instances, especially in blocks like this, is folks will just sit on a property and speculate. And, um, when I'm thinking about the process, you know, we do the inspections, we cite the property, we go through INREM or whatever process to get a hold of the property, we finally have it in our hands and we transfer it to someone that does nothing with it, we have to start the process over again. And it just, it, it triples the work for us. So I'm curious what we are thinking about, uh, by way of, um, either doing whatever we can not to transfer to a, um, an owner that is not truly invested in improving the property, or to, um, somehow holding folks who have not come through in the past accountable so that we don't make that mistake again in the future.
This is one where I'll, um, say a couple words and then pass it along to Deputy Commissioner Redfern as well. So, um, this is a key part that we've been thinking about, um, now for several years, cause it plays a critical role in the entire effort of reduction of vacant properties in the city of Baltimore. Um, the specific, I know that block of Sheridan, it, it's one of the ones we meet with the York Road Partnership quarterly. It's been a target block that's come up, um, in conversation with them and kind of like working through different, uh, components there. Um, you know, we have tightened in terms of significant, um, components, in terms of requirements, um, that you have to provide in terms of, you know, intention, um, and so forth. And this is going to be one of those where it's not just, um, it, it's a combination, right, of process and of people and technology. So, um, the technology investment was made several years ago into the new technology, um, we call Slate, that actually will track the property, not just through the INREM acquisition process, but then through the disposition process and then into a compliance component that actually will be able to monitor like when permits are pooled, if they're pooled within the timeframe of the LDA, what is that timeframe? And, um, have a higher focus on, on compliance as a, as a top priority. Um, and then I'll turn it over to Deputy Redfern to talk a little bit more, just in terms of how, you know, holding them accountable and kind of vision for that compliance.
Good afternoon, Councilman. So just so I'm clear, can you repeat the question for me?
Um, so, um, I was noting an instance on the 500 block of Sheridan where there are a bunch of vacants, but there's one in particular that we came across that had been, um, had trees growing out of it and everything, uh, acquired by the city.
Did you say trees?
Trees.
I'm actually having
Trees growing out of the property. It, it, it was a vacant property that had a lot of issues. Um, and when we looked into the history of the property, uh, the city had acquired it maybe two years ago and transferred it to, uh, you know, I guess through auction, uh, to a, a buyer that buyer, um, sat on it and has been sitting on it and has pulled no permits on it over, in over 18 months. And so, uh, the question was, what can we do to make sure, um, we don't transfer properties that we worked incredibly hard to acquire to speculators who will sit on it for multiple years?
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah.
So I think that, uh, this is another point, as Commissioner Kennedy said, that we are working to improve. And so an example of that would be making sure that we have an executed LDA that has a little bit more teeth in it, right? And so that could be that there are some condition precedents that need to happen before they can close, or some things they need to do immediately and faster after they close. And if they don't act on those things, we need to have a plan to pivot, right? And so that's why I'm saying that it's better before we actually get to settlement, if we can do some things to make sure they're prepared to actually be successful in the rehab of a property. And so like you said before, it is important to make sure that we incentivize that in a way so that they are prepared and successful and give them, whether it be technical support or whatever it's needed, to guide them in the right way to make sure the property's complete.
Okay, I, I, um, what I'll do is, um, I, I like to follow up with you guys and, and talk about that instance and whatever I can learn to be more effective, um, with instances like this in my district. I think it doubles the work and if I can find a way to prevent it from happening in the future, I certainly wanna be able to do that. Um, uh, last thing here was about rental properties and licensing for rentals. Um, and so I noted, um, that the number of properties registered and the percent of rental properties licensed, it's not 100%. Um, uh, the actual number, um, is, uh, 33,484. This is serviced for, uh, 747, um, if folks are looking at the budget book. Um, I wanna make sure we're doing what we can to protect renters. I know this has been a huge priority of the President and the Council. Um, and with that very first step for us is to make sure that folks register their property so that we can ensure that they meet basic standards for rentals. Um, but if we're not getting folks to register, which we know a lot of folks don't, uh, we miss that opportunity to check and make sure these are proper standards. Um, so the number of, the estimated number of rental properties licensed is at 35%. I'm curious, um, how are we thinking about, um, spreading the word, getting more folks to register and holding more, more folks accountable? Um, I'll just leave it there.
Uh, thank you for that question. So, um, we are focusing fiscal year '26. We outlined in our performance metrics, some, um, initiatives, uh, to increase that, that percentage. Um, we will be issuing more citations, um, and measuring that on a quarterly basis. Um, we are launching, uh, next month, um, June, next month is.
We're here.
Yeah, we're here. Um, we are launching a new 311 service request for rental licensing so that, um, residents can call and report if they think there's a property on their block that's not registered or, um, licensed, or a tenant could call and report a property that's not properly licensed. Uh, we'll be doing some data mining, for lack of a better word, to identify properties. Uh, we will be doing mailers out, um, to properties that were registered in the past but didn't renew. Um, so all that, we think will help drive up those numbers. Um, and a lot of this has been just, we're shifting a little bit with, uh, the other SRs that we, with our illegal dumping SRs, we've, we've shifted, uh, the questions that get asked and how those flex works so that we'll have a little bit more bandwidth within, uh, the investigations unit to be able to focus in on the licensing.
I'm gonna, um, make a recommendation similar to the, the issue around, um, around permits here. Um, and, and that is if we can find a way to identify, you know, for instance, you know, if you want to rent, um, somewhere across the city, you're gonna go online somewhere, you're gonna look it up. Um, so I wonder if there's a way for us to take, um, take tabs on where folks are, you know, putting up apartments for rent, uh, and use that as opportunities to reach out to those folks in those apartments to say, hey, look, we don't have you registered. Um, you can come to the website here and very quickly do it that way, but, um,
We, we reach out with a citation.
We start with a citation, there we go. Well, hey, that's fine. Um, but, you know, once again, uh, thinking about where we can use data to streamline our efforts and be smarter and not just work hard, but work smart as well. Um, and, you know, where, where possible, um, giving folks an opportunity where, um, where possible with a carrot and sometimes not always a stick, so. But, you know, if you gotta use the stick, I'm not gonna fight you.
We're gonna, we're gonna tackle both approaches, but.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Commissioner, I wanna talk through, um, a few issues that we've been experiencing in the district. One of them, um, is the, the scamming of, uh, some of these, um, investors, landlords, quote unquote landlords on Craigslist. And they are scamming, uh, individuals out of their security deposits, first and, and last month, you know, you know the drill. And the reason why I bring this up is that as we see a looming housing crisis, we see more and more desperation and fraud that's happening. Can you speak to how we can leverage our, our resources within DHCD and quite frankly, just with, within city government, um, to educate folks on, uh, verifying that these people are actually, they're, they're, um, valid, they have a valid rental license, but also, um, to, to kinda ask the, the, the hard questions? One of the situations, and it's extremely heartbreaking, I know a young lady, um, and her child, uh, were scammed out of $3,000 and now she has no place to live because the fraudulent landlord is not answering the phone, um, there's no way to track them. So can, can you kind of share with us your plan around that? Um, I know that, you know, most of the conversation within your agency is focused on vacants, focused on blight, but I think we also need to have a very clear approach on the legal ramifications of fraudulent activity, um, from Craigslist, from other, um, uh, modes of, of sharing these, these housing, housing options.
I'm gonna, um, I'll address, when you were talking, I think that, um, I definitely believe that we as DHCD and the city, like, as a whole, we can do a better job of educating the public in terms of what to look for, what, you know, as much as we get the B sit trainings on how to, um, you know, recognize clickbait on our emails, um, being able to provide that information. Um, and I think it's also an opportunity to work with our partners in this space, um, as well. The state had their strengthening, you know, their, uh, Renters Rights Act that passed, there's a large focus, we have now the state office, um, as well, focused on renters' rights and so forth. So I think there's definite opportunity to increase education pieces to it. And it is devastating. I've known a couple of people, um, and have heard through, especially through Deputy Commissioner Hart and her team of people that have, um, been scammed out of the security deposits and, and rent. Um, my in-laws were almost, um, I, if it weren't for my sister-in-law and I texting them saying, "No," um, they were about to like submit a security deposit when they first moved back, you know, as a rental. Um, and it's not just our younger and, you know, more vulnerable, it's also our older adults, um, that are falling for these. So I definitely think education is a key piece. We can do a better job. Um, I can talk to the staff and, and work on putting that together and have them reach out to our partners as well to have components to that. I think, um, I'm gonna ask Jason, we're somewhat limited in terms of some of the legal components, um, as a, as a city that we can, that we can take, um, on that piece.
Yeah, I mean, all the activity that I've seen around this, and this is not at all new, it, we've seen it over the years. It does seem though that it has ratcheted up some, um, these are criminal acts, like, just to be clear, it's criminal acts, it's not a civil, but they're extremely difficult to prosecute. Um, not to speak for the state's attorney's office, but, um, you, you need to have somebody that you can charge and in most cases, the individuals just fade away. And, you know, you knew them under one name with a, you know, burner phone and that just doesn't exist anymore. And so, uh, that's not to say it's not impossible. Um, and I know that state's attorney's office does do some work around this stuff, as does the attorney general's office when it comes to, uh, other areas around leases and rentals and fair housing. Um, so there is enforcement out there, but, um, the best way for us to combat this is through that education approach.
Thank you so much. Um, that's a formal committee request. If we, my formal committee request is gathering all of the information and resources, um, for said individuals, um, as it relates to fraudulent activity of landlords. Um, I, I think that this is an incredible opportunity for us in the council's office to kind of push that information out. Um, oftentimes when it reaches our, our, our door, it's like we have a few hours to find them something, or, um, they've, they've had to vacate the property altogether. So thank you for that. My second question has to deal with, um, uh, illegal squatters, um, going into homes and, um, I, I, I believe this is an aspect of code enforcement, but I'm gonna take it a step further because when we're thinking about, um, these persons experiencing homelessness, we, we, uh, I, I think that we've demonstrated during our hearing with MOHS today that there are, there are multiple steps before we get to that there are, there are multiple steps before we get to this particular point where they are experiencing homelessness or have housing insecurity. Talk to me about how we can better protect our homes and our commercial buildings? Because what ends up happening is that these persons, uh, are, are breaching the, the security within these homes. Sometimes they're setting fires and they are utilizing electricity. BG&E is a hot topic, um, during this council term. They're utilizing those services and impacting everyday residents. And they are, um, they're, they're really putting, uh, neighborhoods in, in jeopardy as well, just how the housing stock in Baltimore is, is developed. Talk to me about how we're going to get around and, and help that issue. We've, in District Ten, we've, we've had several fires as it relates to, um, just persons going, break, breaching the security of these homes, going into homes, setting fires, forgetting they set fires or fall asleep, and then the fires getting out of control. And so it's, it's launching into, I, I, I know we, again, I, I know we have a, uh, set precedent of, um, you know, the, uh, attacking these vacant properties, but I want to make sure that we are, um, not biting our nose, well, you know, what is, what is the saying, biting our nose off to despite our face. Like, we are doing so much great work in this area. I would hate that, uh, these issues, um, of persons that need homes, persons that go into, like, the breach of security with those homes would impact and quite honestly diminish our progress of what we're doing.
I think, um, once again, great question and appreciate the opportunity to give some insight. Um, we'll pull in a couple of different staff members as well to kind of, uh, lead off. Um, we have done, uh, analysis and part of the planning work that we do is around looking at vacant properties that are next to occupied properties, whether or not those be homeowner occupied or rental occupied because, uh, definitely the impact that that vacant has on, um, on that occupied property. And that is specific to the vacant buildings with the vacant building notices. With the vacant buildings, vacant building notices, we do have the authority to work with DPW, to ensure that they're boarded, to, um, we have the authority to vacate the property of, of those, of the squatters in those vacant properties. It gets a little bit more difficult when there are properties that don't have vacant building notices.
And more of the private ownership, that's the ones that I'm focusing on. Not the ones that are city-related, but let's focus on those privately owned ones.
Well, and it's a difference, even if it's a privately owned property with a vacant building notice, we have the authority to vacate that property. If it is a privately owned property that does not have a vacant building notice and is caught in the middle of a foreclosure component or a deed transfer or some of those different things where we see, or unfortunately, I think many of you might have seen, a blatant illegal, um, scam process of, um, advertising a service to people to take over properties, which we DHCD referred to the state's attorney's office. Um, I'm gonna, before I have, I think, uh, Deputy Hessler and Deputy Booker talk a little bit more about enforcement and different things that we can do there. We are in the process, working in partnership, uh, with the CIA's office, um, with the fire department and, um, with the innovation team that is the Bloomberg Innovation Team. Uh, we are working on a clearboarding pilot, um, and that will help also deter. So that is actively in process, um, and planning and properties and, and, you know, how to secure the clearboarding, how to still allow what the fire department needs for access. Um, so that will be something as well that we look at in terms of deterrence, um, and what we can do kind of proactively on the deterrent side on some of the enforcement components and legalities of where we can come in, depending upon the different scenarios. I would turn it over right now to Deputy Hessler to go a little bit more in detail.
Thank you. For the privately owned properties that are, are not vacant, a lot of times these are properties listed for rent or listed for sale where the owners already, um, vacated the property and they're waiting for that transfer to a new owner or to, um, get a new tenant in there. When this happens, it is a criminal act, so, but it's something that the property owner needs to be the driving force. Of course, this also happens where there's bankruptcies or foreclosures and ownership is a, in limbo, particularly with a foreclosure. There was a state bill this year that, uh, did not make it, um, did not pass, which would have, um, strengthened the sheriff's ability to, um, go in and remove squatters. Currently, you know, a property owner can take their property back. If it's, you know, if it's a squatting situation, they could take their property back or they could go and file a wrongful detainer action with the court. Those are heard, um, pretty quickly, you know, considering everything else, but it still could be a week or two and a lot can happen in that time with the property. So, um, there's not much the city can do in those situations where it is a habitable property, it did not have a vacant building notice on it. I think.
And Jason, before we transition, um, can you confirm or deny, are there squatters' rights?
I can confirm that there are no squatters' rights in the state of Maryland.
Thank you.
So, uh, one thing that we are doing when we come across these properties, where the scenario is that the person occupying it is saying that they've rented it out and they have, they produce a lease. You know, we know that in many cases, either that individual is a victim because somebody has, um, presented themselves as the owner and had collected first month's rent and security deposit, and then they disappear. And you've got somebody that thinks they're legally renting out the place. Uh, but you also have other scenarios where the person in the property has just created a lease and, you know, says that they rented it from somebody, but they know very well that they're squatting. Um, in both those situations, we do want to make sure that the property is safe. Um, so we have the ability to request inspections under the rental licensing to see if the property is safe. And, um, that may be an avenue where we can get in the property and, you know, if electric is hooked up illegally or other activities, uh, it could merit a vacate. But it's, it really is, ends up being a case-by-case basis. Um, but it's an avenue that we are working on in these cases.
Councilwoman, I have nothing to really add to the occupied, uh, unoccupied properties, but just from a vacant property standpoint. Um, out of the four thousand, some work orders requested this year, eighty-six percent of them are requested by the inspectors. And, um, we've conducted a hundred and sixty-six vacates out of those vacant buildings thus far this year.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you, Commissioner and team. First, commend you for expanding code enforcement, but I gotta go back to the reality. I'm just gonna be transparent with you. How many code enforcement persons have to hire and stay in the agency?
I want to make sure, how many code enforcement inspectors that are hired?
Actually stay?
Stay?
Yeah, like what is your attrition rate?
Yeah, okay.
I'd have to, uh, we'd have to report back on the exact attrition rate.
Commish? I have a training number, okay? So from a training standpoint, um, councilman, in this year, we, out of the people we've hired, nine people are gone in probation. When I look, um, I had asked, uh, Chief, um, Knight Davis this probably a couple of months ago to go back to like twenty-twenty-two. When I go back to twenty-twenty-two, out of the, the attrition that we had from then up through now, um, we had like forty-some people in attrition and out of those, it was like eighteen. So let's just say twenty-seven folks are gone in the probationary period. So the thing that, um, that is always the challenge, um, over the last two, two to three years is we can get the people in the door. There's a technical component to the training and then there's the external environment. So they read a job spec and they say, oh, I'm gonna be a housing inspector. And they're fine as long as they're in northeast. But when I send them somewhere else, they get the reality of being an inspector. And all of a sudden, you know, this isn't a job for them. You know, when I look at the attrition from, um, FY twenty-five, I have nine people that left in probation, only one of my seasoned people left during that time. So most of our attrition for FY twenty-twenty-five has been in the probationary process. And that's because it's the technical component, but when they have to go out in those streets. The training updates, sure. Yeah, so, so what, so what we've started doing is, is like looking at how we train the inspectors. We don't just throw them into the field because these, the environment is different. You have to have street awareness in some neighborhoods. You gotta know when the drug shop is open. You gotta know that this ain't a good time to get that inspection, I'll come back and get it another day. Um, so what we've tried to do is make sure that we pair them up with somebody seasoned. The trainer goes out with them. It's almost like you have an instinct when you're on the street. Some people can't read the street and some people can. So we try to make sure that we, we match people up with territories and areas that fit who they are just to try to retain some of the inspectors, um, that we bring in the door. Um, so as we bring up, as we onboard the sanitation enforcement crew, part of what we're thinking about some of our tactics, like for high grass and weeds, for example. You can't just go put a ruler down in somebody's grass today and say, hey, I'm measuring it to give you a ticket for high grass and weeds because somebody gonna come out the door and have some words for you as an inspector, right? So we modify some of our training to be inspector safety-friendly while still doing the job. Um, and even in this, uh, sanitation enforcement space, what we are thinking about, not committing to, is maybe having two people in one vehicle to do that job just as long as we can get the operational, um, you know, the, um, the numbers that we want from an inspection standpoint, now you're right there.
And I'll just add to that, that Deputy Booker and Assistant Commissioner Yates and myself have had, and with, um, other members of leadership, we've talked about, um, kind of making not just the kind of operational shifts in training to help with attrition, but also, um, just general approach to employee relations to kind of help with that attrition as well, um, the specific staff person that, you know, and, and how to best, um, create opportunities, uh, for staff to ensure that they're getting the best training possible, um, and also supporting them through that onboarding so they want to, um, not just, are they capable of doing the work? Do they want to do the work? And are we providing them the best opportunities for them to succeed in doing the work?
Thank you. I mention that because the broader frustration in West Baltimore is the follow-up on the citations. The number of citations you guys are getting is impossible to keep up with when you have the sanitation issues versus doing inspections on homes. And I'm really, and I'm gonna say this frustrating because I think that we're at a nexus where we need to change the model in a way. One, because after talking to the bargaining unit that represents some of your, your, your staff, they're interested in doing night and evening works too, about actually looking at it. Because I think that for someone like me who gets a call on a weekend, on a Sunday morning, that someone has now dug a hole and created a basement door and now there's two people's foundations that are currently damaged because BPD has witnessed it themselves, but they have no authority to actually issue a citation or start work order. It's frustrating when I think about cities like New York, Portland, Atlanta, who use agents and inspectors at night and weekends to deal with these issues. It's something I've seen that's been brought up at the National League of Cities where they've looked at this model too, where we move to a more, an enforcement model that allows people to be like community aides that actually follow up on the small things like high grass and weeds and sanitation, so that we have agents that are able to get to those issues that we know will broadly create more issues. So as a committee request, I would like to think and partner with you because I'm willing to find the resources to help you change your model, but it's frustrating because I have no answers for my residents who say someone is doing, doing illegal work at night because our hours are eight to four-thirty. I think we need an answer. Because if everyone knows, I gotta wait till four-thirty-one, I'm wait till four-thirty-one, I'm gonna do the work. I think we have to find a way to not only ensure worker safety, but also to pay a lines because if people are doing this, it's gonna be interesting. I've seen, some of the technology I've seen at the conference was that they had software that actually measured the actual height of the grass from the camera phone that someone had, without our agents having to be close. I think we have to think differently, but I think that, I hate to say this, normalcy is not the answer anymore. I'm willing to think this through, help you figure out the process, create the legislation to give you the authority. Case in point, other cities have given their housing and code enforcement authority to actually file criminal charges for people who are squatting in homes. There are options that we have that we have not explored that other agents, other cities have. I think that we really need to sit down and say, this is a reoccurring problem, we keep addressing it, it's taking a lot of our staff time, how can we address it and nip it in the butt right away? I'll give you an example, um, for my next question, it's about your CTEP. I saw the work you guys have done in.
Councilman, I heard you say that there was a formal, uh, did I hear you correctly?
Yes.
I just want to make sure we capture it correctly.
I would like a meeting with code enforcement, the law department, um, to think through some switches and, and also the labor commissioner, how we can build a staffing model, but safety model that allows our agents to be out not only in, in the evening, but also weekends. Because when I think about illegal dumping, the cameras are cute and everything, but they're not capturing it.
So you're saying you want them to think through, is your committee request for a plan?
I want to have initial meeting, then a plan.
A meeting, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that word.
Meeting, and then we think through a plan or a plan of action to work together. Because I don't, I, I get it, I don't know your work, but I'm willing to be a thought partner, figure out how we can get resources to do it together because it is a reoccurring issue I can't just have anymore. I only have three gray hairs and I don't want any more. Thinking about this code enforcement issue because there are opportunities where we could pay people who just do follow, follow-up phone calls to help people with getting their issues abated. And it doesn't take staff time from Chief Yates or Booker to get your staff out there and they can do things that are high priority and utilizing these people's time usefully. Um, that's the first request. The other is with your crime prevention through environmental design. I saw the presentation from the recovery office. I have questions because two million dollars is nice, but I want to know exactly what the expenditures are. I still am awaiting it from the recovery office, but I'd like to hear what you guys are performing on.
Sure, um, so the crime prevention through environmental design, that was a pilot with ARPA-Dollars, uh, focused Fayette Street outreach, um, area specifically, and then also, um, kind of Greater Bay Brook Alliance, uh, focus areas. Uh, depending upon the neighborhoods, it was actually, um, worked on in partnership with the neighborhoods. They were leading it, uh, related also to their work with MONC, with the police department and with the policing plans. So some of, uh, the work, uh, was gating and, uh, fencing around one of, um, the vacant lot areas. Um, there's been, in specifically with Fayette Street Outreach, I think also with Greater Bay Brook, um, individual homes assisted with cameras, lighting, exterior improvements. Um, also on, specifically on Vine Street and Fayette Street Outreach, um, that was a key, um, block and area that was targeted, um, for changing the environmental structure through rehabilitation of some strategic vacant properties there. So it was stabilization of those and then rehab as well as additional lighting. Um, we can work through to get those, we'll partner with, uh, Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs and make sure that you have the request for those details.
Thank you. Um, my next question is the alignment of the housing strategy. How does the FY twenty-six budget reflect implementation of comprehensive housing plan released in fall twenty-twenty-four? Specifically how the various housing package eliminates, uh, elements aligned with plans and goals, especially given the legislation to do upzoning, um, traditionally? Because I've been getting inundated with emails from neighbors who are not fans of adding multifamily dwellings in their neighborhoods. And I am a steward of history with Bed-Stuy Harlem DC. I saw what it did to black neighborhoods where they increased the housing stock, but the prices went up and they went increasingly less black without intentionality. So I want to know how the plan that we spent thousands of dollars on aligns with this actual legislation as well too.
So, um, we haven't finalized the, the housing plan. I, um, that is actively still being, uh, created and, um, will be out again, uh, for public comment, uh, shortly. I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Chief Rubens, who's been leading, um, that effort. I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Rubens, who's been leading that effort.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. Thank you, Councilman, well Vice Chair Torrance, or I guess Councilman Torrance in this committee, for the opportunity to speak on the status of the housing plan. So there is our Baltimore, which is the planning department's plan, but you're referring to the DHCD specific housing plan that's in progress, correct? Okay, so we had an original tentative timeline of releasing the draft for public comment in Q1 of this year and finalizing it in the spring of this year. Unfortunately, I had to go on three months of FMLA. And so as I'm sure you can appreciate, and you saw me, timelines shifted. So we're right now finalizing the first draft and we plan to release it for at least two rounds of public comment. And there's going to be robust sections and part of also robust sections around that specifically address what you're discussing, the points that you've raised around anti-displacement to protect against, you know, raise high, or I should say, the, the very real concerns about housing prices, both in the rental and homeownership markets increasing if we were to upzone, if we were, if we were to make significant investments in historically disinvested neighborhoods. And so we're gonna be making sure that we're really explicit in uplifting both the existing policies that we have at our disposal, like both the homeowners and homestead tax credit, to make sure that those policies and, or those programs are more widely circulated and known about, as well as introducing new and probably controversial, frankly, policies that I'm not yet ready to discuss that are much needed in the city, particularly around renters' rights and renter protections.
I hear you, but here's the disconnect.
Yeah, of course. And so what, what am I not answering? And please just, I want this to be like, I wanna make sure I'm getting you the right information that you need.
So philosophically, the mistakes that we've made across history and, and different, we, when we upzone, we did not do strategically around typology, first and foremost. I don't see any type of conversation with this new bill about typology, first and foremost. The other I don't see is us looking and actively looking for mortgage products that allow people who are like me of color to actually do an ADU in their property and actually buy. Because the commercial loans that you will need for dwelling typically are not accessible to black and brown people, given the current market. So I think that when we think about these policies, we have to go deeper. Because when I look at just pulling the census tract in Bed-Stuy, Bed-Stuy went from a seventy-one percent black neighborhood to a forty-six percent black neighborhood. The majority of the housing typology is now multifamily dwellings. And the ownership of those multifamily dwellings are either corporations or persons of non-color.
Oh, can I?
So I say that because I wanna be specific to my neighbors. We wanna be intentionality. We want people to come to Baltimore, live in Baltimore. But to, as we're thinking about, as we're doing our financial plan, to increase the cap on the homestead tax credit, that means that people like my neighbors who are not accessible to all the tax credits will more than likely be priced out. I think that for the intentionality of this, I think we have to go deeper. And I would like to see the plans, but I wanted plans that say, we've reached out to financial institutions, create products to allow people to stay in their homes. I wanna see plans where we're looking at typology and we're going block by block. And we're gonna say, we're gonna zone this block. And I say surgical and not broadly because Ridlin and got us here because they did it strategically. And to just take a sledgehammer to black neighborhoods the way that this bill would is historically, and I say this because I was sent here by black and brown people who have invested their entire wealth in their homes. I want a surgical decision because I know what happened in Remington with one of my colleagues whose grandmother who's priced out within eighteen months of all the things that happened in Remington. Her, her actual property taxes went from eight hundred dollars to twelve thousand dollars in five years. I just wanna be intentional, and I say this in this budget hearing because morally, the budget does not really align to that alignment right now.
Thank you for your clarifying comments, Councilman Torrance. And I, I think we share the same goals and vision for this city about being surgical, about being intentional, about making sure the right policies are there at the outset to protect people like the homeowner in Remington that you mentioned. And so I just wanna clarify one thing that you shared in your remarks, which is the zoning bill that was introduced recently is separate from the housing plan that I'm working on. And in the sense that.
The two go together.
Of cour-, yeah, and I hear that they, they go together, but they're kind of, they're operating on parallel tracks. And so we're, I'm going to have to, we're going to have to see how those are going to, how the introduction of these bills will impact the, you know, population projections that are in the housing plan, that are in the policy recommendations that are already drafted in the plan, and.
So I hear you, but I also think about the fact that I represent West Baltimore and I've ran out of middle school seats, right? For middle school seats in West Baltimore. I now have young people who are coming from East Baltimore to go to Booker T., right? We're not being strategic enough to say that we need to work with city schools to think about how we're using our Build to Learn dollars to build the elementary schools and the actual middle schools to account for the population growth. On top of that, a number of our communities that would be upzoned have not had the birth rates to support the new typology that would be needed. So that means our schools will be overcrowded. So I think that we need to be strategic because this exact thing happened in Baltimore County and there's a reason why they're in a consent decree and now have rezoned a portion of Rosedale and now call it White Marsh so that they can be applicable to the federal government's actual consent decree because they can't actually put black people in a neighborhood. So I think that we need to be strategic. One, and I, and as a request, I would like to see not only the draft of this plan, but how it aligns to the, the current population of our schools and how we're planning to get there. In addition to that, I will say this, you cannot put the chicken and the egg together at the same time. There are two things, they have to be on the same track, but they have to speak to each other. I will say that because if you look at the history of Ridlin, the financial market and the legislators at that time, they spoke to each other about it. They made sure, there's a reason why a number of the organizations who are now helping us pay towards getting rid of the actual crisis that they started are now paying for it now because they benefited when people were having their mortgages accelerated. I represent neighborhoods where you can cross Fulton Street if you are black, right? I live in a neighborhood where there literally was an article that says Ashburton from, from Jews to Gentiles to Blacks in nineteen seventy-two. An actual article from the Baltimore Sun. I wanna make sure that when we make these decisions, they're strategic because I have to think about my neighbors in Hamlin who are facing a facility where they're asking to actually move out to the actual property line and put forty residents and ten workers into this facility and not have a conversation with their neighbors. I also have neighbors who are living in Reservoir Hill who have multifamily dwellings and people throw trash out the back window because there's no fire exit. Or they're not paying for a dumpster. These, all these things, what I wanna see is not only the housing plan, but also a connection to our schools, also the zoning matches in specific neighborhoods. But in addition to that, I wanna make sure that we have a code enforcement model that aligns with it. That's why I brought the code enforcement question first, because I literally had a developer who put a, a group home on the first floor of a house on Reservoir Street. On the second floor was a legal Airbnb. On the third floor was someone who didn't know they weren't supposed to be renting because they never had a rental license, right? All in one building in Reservoir Hill, right? I just wanna make sure that the two things talk because when I go to NLC, the Housing Accelerator Program they have there, they have developers, they have zoning, they have everyone in the room. These bills were drafted without everyone in the room. And I would get off my high horse right now, okay? I'm, I'm passionate about this because, and I will say this, because as someone who had family live in Bed-Stuy, the average rent right now in my aunt's neighborhood is thirty-four hundred dollars for inefficiency. But in two thousand and one, when she bought her brownstone, that was seven fifty. We are seeing an opportunity that people are, I, I say this so hardly, I, the writing's on the wall. We had, two weeks ago, we found out Atlanta's rental units, thirty percent are owned by three corporations. If we don't get this right, I'm gonna have people living in Sandtown in housing that's owned by somebody who never touched foot near Lilian Jones, who never stepped off the Amtrak to see what their neighborhood looked like. So what I would like to see, and I would make it very clear for the staff, is a meeting to discuss the bills. One, to make sure that we are having adequate conversations with city schools because I don't have middle school seats. And I say that as a person who grew up in a middle school that was overcrowded, a person who went to a school, a mid-high school that was overcrowded. And as we're, according to the Janus report, we are downsizing schools to build new schools, but we're not thinking about what's gonna happen. I'll give you an example, Reservoir Hill is, has Dorothy, Dorothy High Elementary School. That is a feeder school into Mount Royal. Mount Royal is at a hundred and ten percent capacity. Those kids leaving that elementary school go to middle school in a school, in a middle school that is a hundred and ten percent capacity. We just closed Utah Merseburn. Those kids were rezoned to two schools that are now at ninety percent capacity for their middle school. If you, if the math is mathing, I'm adding a hundred and twenty new Ryan Homes in Reservoir Hill. We're getting four hundred units of rental. Where are we gonna put the bodies of young people? And we already have a transportation system that can't support young people getting from point A to point B on time for school. So I wanted to make sure that we are talking to city schools about their plans and what schools you are. I'll give you an example, Gwinns Falls Elementary School, oh, sorry. I'll say this, Gwinns Falls Elementary School has been on the Twenty First Century List and is receiving young people from a closing school in Edgewood. Now Gwinns Falls is gonna be at ninety percent capacity. And eventually their feeder school is non-existent as well because they're competing with Robert Covin Elementary School. The next is, I wanna make sure that when we talk to planning, I wanna see a typology map of where we think this bill will actually impact people. And then I wanna make sure that we look deeper into it. If we're gonna undo Ridlin, we gotta actually do it surgically. I wanna know what blocks would be impacted and how we can re-change them for typology, to be specific, so that we can grow mixed income communities. I give you an example, we've done a lot of work with Winata. The majority of the master plans that I have in my district in West Baltimore.
I need you to close all that this time.
I'm almost done, Madam Chair, one second. Say that they want homeownership. So I wanna make sure that we are looking at typology by block to make sure that we start focusing on blocks for homeownership and rentals. In addition to that, I wanna make sure that we are actively looking for experts on this too and seeing if we've done any research with experts to have them in the room to think about how we do this strategically. That's it.
Okay, I was trying to let you, you know, get through it. I thought that it was very important. The folks here would you need to say during this time? I think this is the right time during a budget hearings to express your thoughts and I agree with them. We're gonna go to Councilman Jones.
All right, first is, I wanna say, oh, thanks, Madam Chair. But first I just wanna say thank you for your hard work and the progress you and your team made over the years. I see it every day in neighborhoods within my district like Johnson Square and Oliver. But with that said, I will say, my office also doesn't give out permits and we also don't do code enforcement, but you wouldn't think so based upon the amount of calls we get regarding that topic. But I will say every time, you know, I'm able to help and it happens, it makes me look like a rock star because people are just dying for, for help at that point. But what I would like for us to do is get to a point where they don't have to call the office. And then that's where I'm at. And, you know, I wanna be helpful and supportive and stretching and getting us there as quickly and as efficiently as, as possible. So just wanna say I wanna be a partner and look at things from that lens. So my first question is, there are multiple properties across the city with years of code violations. Since taking office, my team's gotten complaints from homeowners whose properties have been damaged due to these properties with violations and they've had to spend thousands of dollars out of their own pockets to fix these issues. While I understand that a lot of these issues require legal action between the property owners, I would like to know, what is the current backlog of unresolved code violations in the city? And is there, and is this something that you all track by district? And how long is the average case open?
So currently, we have approximately thirty-two thousand open violation notices. That includes the twelve thousand five hundred and ninety-three vacant buildings that are currently out there. So those notices would include high grass and weeds, trash violations, what we call itemized notices, which would be different items on the property that are deficient. So it could be a defective fence, could be a defective roof, could be a broken window, window shutter missing. Two interior violations as well, clogged sink. In some cases, those violations exist because no one has called for any kind of abatement on those, particularly interior violations. A lot of times we'll get the notice on the property, but then the tenant may move out and it gets corrected, but the landlord doesn't call. We did institute with the rental licensing where you can't get your rental license if you have an open notice. That has helped reduce the number of open violations because landlords are actively calling us to get notices abated. I don't remember the rest of your question.
On average, how long is a case open before?
Yeah, we don't have any of those averages because it really does depend on the type of violation, the market. One example is if it's a abandoned lot, a vacant lot that nobody else is cutting but the city, whether it's city-owned or privately owned, we have that notice on that property for as long as it is that way so that we have the authority to go out and cut and clean it. So while we could abate that notice, once we've cut it, if we did that, then we'd have to reissue the notice, wait the time, and then to be able to cut it and clean it again. So there's not really a good stat or an average that would mean, be meaningful.
I, I, I understand, and, and that's kind of one of the difficulties I run into, like trying to look at my office's rate on how many cases we have open, how many we have closing. When some of these code enforcement issues are never really closed or they stay open, it kinda gives a hard, it makes it hard to, to see the progress, you know, in some of these instances.
I mean, you, you're definitely able to measure progress within like the vacant building notices, which is a major focus for our department and the city as a whole. And we were at sixteen thousand vacant buildings in twenty sixteen and as of this afternoon, we were at twelve thousand five hundred and ninety-three. So you can definitely measure progress there. And, you know, and there's still a lot of work to do, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With thirty-two thousand open violations, what would you say is like the reason for some of the delays and I guess?
Some of the what?
Well, the, I'm sorry, delays and like the violations being, you know, the code being resolved.
Being debated?
Oh, yeah, being debated, yeah.
Being debated, sometimes, you know, it's people who just don't have the means to fix their property. So when you look at the thirty-two thousand and subtract out that twelve thousand vacant buildings, so you're talking about seventeen thousand exterior and interior notices. Out of that seventeen thousand, about eighteen hundred of those are interior notice. So the majority are exterior, which could be those vacant lots. A lot of times what you, what you see is people don't have the means to fix their properties. So some of those exterior violations could be defective window, defective gutter. We focus on the interior violations because usually that's a tenant calling saying that a landlord didn't fix something. So we wanna make certain that they are in safe living conditions. So we focus on those properties that say, hey, I got an interior problem, we wanna deal with that. Some of the exterior notices that have been open for quite some time is just a matter of people not having the means or, you know, get a little bit more bite, we'll get there.
I guess my last follow-up question with this one is like, what mechanisms do you have in place to like enforce, to enforce that, to ensure that these violations are kind of taken care of in a timely manner? You know, because sometimes people will be like, look, I just don't wanna get to it and, and not just.
Yeah. Okay, you know, what, one of the things that, that we have. Okay. Um, you know, what, one of the things that, that we have been, um, moving towards is the, the exterior notices that we have on the books. It almost goes to something that one of the other council folks said, we talk about a model. Um, instead of having the inspector go out and keep looking at these things over and over again, we have been working with our office support staff to make phone calls to these actual properties and to be able to issue a failure to abate citation without, what I call a truck roll, without an inspector going back out there, because some of them have been open for quite some time. So we're going to, um, start shifting towards the model where we have our office support folks engaged to just make these phone calls to ask people, what is their problem? Because one thing that we might find out is they may need some, some assistance from Deputy Hart's team because they don't have the means to fix it. So we think that starting this phone call just to check in saying, hey, you've had this notice for, uh, your SOFIT open for the last three years. I don't want to give you a, a citation. What, what help do you need to get that fixed? So we're, we're moving in that direction because we can gather some intel, because we, we're going to bump into people that's going to need some help. Some people that just don't have the means. And then you'll have some people that are just stubborn and they will be on the other end of the failure to abate citation for two hundred and fifty bucks.
Got it. Because I would be interested in the same way the council provided extra tools with the MRAM process to ensure that, you know, those houses that were vacant and abating, the city is able to do something if there's more that the council can do to ensure that you have enforcement issued, to make sure these things are taken care of. It'd be something that these violations are taken care of. It'd be something we'd be interested in. Because some of these violations that they sit in aren't addressed, they're affecting the resident next door. And they're practically living in like terrible situations that know no fault of their own.
Thank you for that, Councilman.
Can I, one point, Councilman, um, as part of the Be More Fast work, I am soon, quickly doing or hoping to do more soon, transparency with all the public hearings that happened for the zoning board, liquor board, planning commission. I've been trying to get to the environmental control board because I think this will be something that'll be helpful. Less about permitting, but more for your issues and the community's issues, seeing the transparency because of right now, if a citation happens and there's a hearing, I, I don't even know how one could track it unless you call and ask what happened. And so having that transparency to be able to say, hey, there's a hearing about this case in their neighborhood, which will make it easier on a website to have one website to have each by council district, and then also to say, oh, there's a hearing about high grass and weeds. Hey, and this was one last week, what happened? Or you'll see what happened. You'll know there was enforcement, or you'll know there wasn't. And that'll be a trigger to say for you as a councilperson or the neighbors to say, HCD, we need to come out, out here and be more aggressive because there's been nothing happening and we don't see any hearings. Since right now, you can't tell that. And so that's one area where I think there can be just more data available that'll make it easier.
No, I, I appreciate that. When you kind of remind me of my initial question, as far as the open violation, do you track that by council district at all? Because I would, okay.
I can tell you how many vacant buildings you have. I can tell you how many interior open notices you have. I can tell you how many exterior notices you have.
No, that would, that would be wonderful. I'll definitely follow with you and your officer. See how we can have that information and, you know, at the district, I would like to see where we are.
Can we make that a, um, formal?
Okay.
Council request?
Yes, I would like to make it a formal council crime. I'm still kind of new to this, that we receive the code violation information and uh, vacant buildings per district. So, thank you.
Based off of, based off of where we are in May twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
Councilman Blanchard?
What's, one, can I get one other question real quick?
You got it.
Huh? All right. Um, quick question for, you know, I had another one. I'll wait till we come back around, but huh? All right, cool. There's, there is, yeah, you're right, there isn't. Um, okay, so in two thousand and eighteen, the city and the housing authority, um, were jointly awarded, uh, thirty million dollar grant to redevelop Perkins homes. Um, the application required that the city leverage those grant funds to support projects like building a new school, um, City Springs Elementary Middle School. Um, there was also an MOU, um, between the city and city schools that agreed that building a new City Springs school at the former Lumbar Middle School. So basically the MOU said the DHCD would award, would finance twenty million dollars for design and construction to the new school with three payments. I think one of the payments was in like December twenty-three, I was told, and January twenty-four, and then another one in March of twenty-five. From what I was told, that there hasn't been any payments yet and just wanted to know what's the status of DC, DC, DHCD's, um, commitment of providing.
Councilman Jones, I can take that question. It's been managed out of the, the finance department. I actually reached out to uh, the chief of staff at city schools earlier today to get the invoice, to have her submit the formal invoice so that we can make that payment.
Oh, wow. That's a big check and we're glad to hear that. So, um, the principal will be glad to hear about that and so everyone else. So thank you all.
And just as a side note, we, um, I, I last spoke with Principal Riquetta. What seems like it was like a month ago, probably now was January or February, which wasn't a month ago. But, um, have had some regular contact with her just in terms of status, especially around the demolition and other things.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. Thank you all.
Councilman Blanchard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner, thank you for being here. I, uh, am going to be quick. I'm not being curt. I'm just, it's just five-thirty on a Friday afternoon. So, um, so, uh, first off, the, from the, um, the March hearing over permitting, the permitting hearing, um, and I checked with the council president's office. I don't think we got several of the, um, the committee requests from that hearing. And I've got them here somewhere. Um, do y'all recall if that is correct? Because that's what we're, we're tracking.
I will, um, I believe it, one of them is the draft, I think draft dashboard, some, and some other items. I will, um, confer uh, with MoGR and the city administrator and update, um, the timeline, uh, for those items.
Yep, great. And so, yeah, the, the couple that I have on here, uh, the timeline for the permit dashboard, uh, a preliminary timeline for implementation of the Be More Fast Plan. And the percentage of calls being resolved at the three-one-one permits call center versus being referred to a technician from March twenty-four through February twenty-five.
Yes. And, um, we do have, just for awareness, we're, we do have a draft dashboard. It's being reviewed. So I need to confer, like I said, with MoGR and the CA's office, and we'll work to get you a timeline, uh, to get those items, as well as confer with Deputy Mayor Williams on the Be More Fast issue.
Okay. Yeah, so Madam Chair, I'd like to make an official request to get the, to get the committee request, uh, from the March hearing.
We got you. We're following up on a committee request from March's hearing.
Okay. Um, next up, the, uh, speaking of, of plans and housing plans and everything. So I am extremely appreciative of the, I think, A, the impact investment areas are A, great and B, a real testament to the mayor's commitment to the historically disadvantaged neighborhoods in the city. And I think they're an incredibly important tool. And, um, you know, I'm seeing the benefit of that firsthand through DHCD's support of what's going on in, uh, in Upton and my district. The, you know, one of the, and seeing this, the, the improvements, particularly in that area. Um, in Upton, we have between, what, over the last eight years, it's gone from, I think, four hundred and fifteen, um, VBNs to two hundred and eighty or something like that. Needs to move faster. Looks like it's going to be moving faster, but, but that's also real progress. The, um, in the twenty twenty-two West Impact Investment Area Plan, um, there's this figure which shows block level planning. I know we've talked about this, talked to you and planning about this a couple of times. Uh, and something that partially because of how fast some of these improvements are being made, it is, it's unclear to me what the prioritization is for, for this year, for next year. Is this lot going to be, you know, a, a new build row home, or is it going to be a parklet, or is this going to, right? And I know that I've had several. There's been some confusion amongst, um, people trying to build in the neighborhood and whatnot. There's also been, I've, I've heard some gripes from, um, people trying to do work, good work in the neighborhood off of a lack of clarity or potentially transparency. Not that the, not that I've seen it, but, um, so I think it would be extremely beneficial to get an update of that plan. At least in the eleventh district portion of the, um, of the West IA. So is that something that, that we could get from DHCD?
Yes, we can, um, we can work to get that to you. I'd like to confer with the staff and we can get back to you on the timeline for that. And I just say that because we just had a meeting two weeks ago, uh, with Ms. Wanda and Kelly and the team. And, uh, looking at actually some of the priority blocks and kind of shifting some of the strategies. So, um, the, the work is ever-evolving and ever
Sure.
changing, um, and it is not stagnant when it comes to the planning. So I just want to confer with everybody, but, uh, be happy to talk to you about that. And we'll work with, um, MoGR to get you that timeline.
Awesome. Yeah. And the, the fluidity of it is what, you know, demands the update. So, uh, and I won't spend one of my committee request pennies on that one, but expect to hear from you guys in the next couple of weeks. So, and then lastly, um, we've had a lot of great talk about vacant buildings, uh, talking about vacant lots and specifically, uh, vacant lot tax. So, are we? Uh, I, I think I've been hearing that there's, you know, I mean, I've heard from you that the concerns about what's going to be the impact and everything. But if we want to implement a vacant lot tax, um, by, you know, fiscal year twenty-seven, which I certainly do. I know Councilman Ramos is championing that, you know, I think there's some, some real support for that. We have to get the list of properties into the state by, I think it's December first of this year, right? Is that on the? How's that process going? I heard that y'all were doing an inventory to try to figure these things out. Where, where's that process at? How's that looking?
Um, great question. We actually just, uh, spoke with Councilwoman Ramos about this at our meeting, uh, last week, two weeks. The weeks are all blinding together at this point. Um, two weeks ago. Uh, we have actually officially, I believe the agreement is on BOE next Wednesday. Um, but everybody is like waiting and pulling the trigger. Um, and that's for the main, um, entity that's going to be helping kind of pulling together kind of inventory process mapping associated with the vacant lots as well. Um, we're also working with some of the local partners like, uh, Baltimore Greenspace and, and Katie Lauder and her team to help with some of the on-the-ground, um, inventory. And like we spoke about in our meeting and what we spoke about with Councilman Ramos is just really working to get a really good sense of the lots, the inventory. What is a vacant, true vacant lot? What has any type of stewardship associated with it, historic stewardship? What are we targeting for side yards? Um, we've also had over the years, several conversations with the comptroller on kind of a side yard disposition strategy. And we'd want to, um, work to make sure that that was, you know, in this as well. And just getting that definition of kind of a vacant lot, um, as, as cohesive as possible. That makes sure that it's kind of comprehensive, gets us the outcome that we're looking to get, and also, um, doesn't, um, negatively impact some of those stakeholder groups that could be negatively impacted by a vacant lot tax. Um, so the work will be ongoing. That's one of the key things out of the gate is getting like that idea, working with the stakeholders. This also includes the Office of Sustainability is a key partner in this, Baltimore Greenspace. Um, and we're also, MC, going to be talking specifically about the vacant lots at the sustainability. Do you want to? Oh, you don't have a mic?
I think the, the other thing I would just add in terms of our ability to implement the, the split tax rate for the vacant properties, we also have to implement the new tax system. We're not able to, um, implement the two-tiered tax system with our current legacy system.
I, I think you might, are you, Director, are you referring to a land value tax?
No.
You're referring to?
I'm referring, I'm referring to the, the vacant, the, the differential rate for the vacant property that was approved by the council in the last, um, in the last session.
Can, I'm not.
Follow up on that, Madam Chair? Um, thank you. Uh, so we, um, the vacant tax, vacancy tax will be the same for vacant lots and vacant buildings. We're not splitting the two, right? So it'll be the same once we get the vacant lots in as well. The bill is, says specifically that the vacancy tax on houses or on properties now, because that's where it is, is supposed to be, um, implemented and in the tax bills for fiscal year twenty-seven, so starting next year.
Certainly. And when we discussed the timing of that bill last year, the implementation of the new tax system was a big
That's right. That's why we delayed it a year.
In terms of fiscal twenty-seven. So I believe that's still the goal, but as we discussed in the finance department hearing, um, and as we've discussed with some of these other major systems, uh, you know, the city's position is to make sure that those systems are ready to go live and be successful versus rushing to a go-live date. So being able to hit that deadline is going to be, I'm just flagging, it's conditional upon that project staying on track.
Well, I understand. I, I, we did postpone the enactment date for a year in order to do that. The state bill that my colleague is talking about is, um, that when the state enabling legislation that basically says if we do this in each jurisdiction, we have to report to them every December on the properties that are actually in. So our goal was to try to get the vacant lots in the vacancy tax by just the, that deadline for this year, if at all possible. So, and I think that's what you're referring to. Yeah?
Yes. Yeah. And I'll, I'll just end my comments here by saying that we, you know, we talk about the permit process, we talk about getting the funding, we talk about getting all these really important aspects of tackling the vacant, uh, vacancy crisis. A lot of the solutions are legislative and, and the the vacant building tax and the vacant lot tax are a very, very important aspect of being able to do this whole very important project fast. So if, I think it's very important that both of these are able to be implemented come fiscal year twenty-seven. So, um, Madam Chair, thank you.
We are going to have questions from Council Member Gray and then Council Member Ramos to close this agency hearing, and then we're going to move into Lit Baltimore after. Um, Councilman Gray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'm all, I'm going to, uh, my first question has to do with something that, uh, Councilwoman Ramos also champions. Um, and it's tax sale prevention. Um, and I also want to give a shout out to Mr. Donald Wright, who's been doing a great job outreach, making sure that we my, your constituent, you used to be a part of, you used to be my pastor, assistant pastor, so.
You guys have to fight over that.
We'll figure it out. Um, so the tax sale prevention has been allocated for three hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars for FY twenty-six. Um, but we know that many homeowners reach out for assistance during tax sale, uh, with the assistance being extremely limited. How can we ensure that the legacy residents can remain in their homes, which, uh, which in reality reduces the amount of vacant and abandoned properties, um, with, without prioritizing funding in the service area? Um, funding tax sale prevention services would directly align with the city's comprehensive vacant, uh, reduction and prevention strategy and attract new homeowners. So, um, how are we ensuring that we are doing everything we possibly can to keep people in their homes?
I think, uh, that's a great, uh, question and always looking, um, for ways to ensure that the resources are there, uh, to, to, to be able to do the work and, and process and work through. I don't know, um, Deputy Commissioner, if you want to talk a little bit about the, um, or M-HAP, because in tax sale.
Excuse me. So the tax sale deferral program, it runs February to April, just to be able to get people off of the list. While we are, um, have access to the M-HAP funds, what we try to do is people who already apply for tax sale deferral, it's automatically put them in M-HAP to be able to foster that.
And just Nicole, what is M-HAP?
I'm sorry, emergency, emergency mortgage and homeowner assistance program. So during that tax sale season, we have those two programs working together while we do have the M-HAP funds available. So that if they apply for, um, the deferral, because that just takes them off the list to make sure that they apply for the M-HAP assistance to be able the M-HAP assistance to be able to cost of that. And then what we also do is go back and look at people who were denied for some reason because they might not fit those tight parameters of tax sale deferral. And also refer them over to M-HAP and then help them cost of that that way. We also work strategically with, um, Nika and, um, and that team. So they bring us a lot of cases and we figure out strategic ways to assist people. And what we're also looking at is working with, uh, persons with tangled title to be able to help them get the assistance, um, while they're working through the title. So what we, um, have been able to do, um, is if, um, working with like NVLS and our legal partners, if they can, um, give us the verification that the person has a clear pathway to title, then we will help them through the M-HAP program.
Okay. Um, I, still, it seems like, uh, not a lot of money, uh, for what the, uh, the amount of, um, homes that are on the tax sale list each and every year. Um, I know in our office alone, we send out letters to double back just to ensure that people are getting the notices. Cause often we hear that they don't, right? And so, um, I don't know, it just seems like, I appreciate just the wraparound service, but the direct help, the direct need. Um, people are directly reaching out to DHC D for this help. Um, and so, uh, you know, I don't know where we can take the money from. I know funds are limited. But, you know, if we can, if we can improve that, that would, that would be amazing for our legacy homeowners.
So additionally, what I also did, you heard about a lot of reorg in my department. Part of that was, um, when we had a change in leadership in tax sale deferral, we added some community engagement to that. So that new position is tax sale and community engagement. And so we've looked at strategic ways that we can add more marketing. And so it would be the marketing for my deed, my legacy, um, marketing for homeowners insurance, renters insurance and all those kinds of things to be able to show that legacy homeowners and homeowners and legacy renters stay in their neighborhoods. So, um, that is part of what that new role will look like. And we're currently recruiting for that position. So that person will take the charge in doing more direct outreach to ensure that during, you know, that we assist those legacy homeowners with their tax sale issues.
And, um, what we've been able to do is leverage different funding sources, like the M-HAP funding source, et cetera, which we will continue to look to do to be able to, you know, meet, uh, the need.
Thank you. Um, the $6,122,629 that has been allocated, uh, to the Housing Rehabilitation Service, does this include the light program? Um, it's service number 750.
Uh, Council, Councilman, um, that is showing up in, in the book because there was, um, an actual charge uh, to that, uh, Activity Code in Fiscal '24. That's not an, an, an active Activity Code that the agency is using.
Okay. Um, can you provide the exact amount budgeted for this, um, very essential service?
Uh, which, the light program?
Light intake program and light intake assessment.
Yeah, I defer that to the housing team.
It's split. Uh, Deputy, it, it's actually split, light intake and assessment unit is split between two different services because it doesn't actually physically do the work. It does the intake and the application processing.
So, um, the light intake and
Your microphone.
The light intake and assistant staff, they go between service 750. Um, some sit there because their salaries are covered by CDVG. And then the ones who are on general fund are in 752 under Human Services.
Okay. And, um, do you also have, how many residents were actually assisted through the light program? Uh, and the reason I ask this is because we often have constituents reach out to our office for assistance, uh, with the application. Um, and some folks are, some folks make it through, some folks don't. But then the issues don't stop there. We also have issues with it being delayed for months. Um, I've been emailing threads where the folks are going back and forth with the contractor and then we have to get involved. And I feel like it's too many, too many chefs in the kitchen to, um, deliver the, the need for the improvement that the constituent needs.
You may answer that. Yep. So all of that is not the light program. So the light program is only responsible for the application piece. So they do that initial outreach, they do the assessment. They, um, do the initial outreach, the assessment, they do the application. And then they also assist with any wraparound services that are found out during that assessment process. Once they define what programs that the person qualifies for, then they do all of the applications to go out to many respective programs that the person will qualify for. So that's the extension of light. That, their, their work ends there. Then what you're describing is our rehab department. So that goes through a different process and that's a different workflow. And so what we have been working on with our new, um, Assistant Commissioner Paluzzi is, you know, taking out some, figuring out how to redo that process so it's a lot easier. Um, a lot of that back and forth with the contractors is that sometimes, um, homeowners choose, um, contractors that aren't in our system or they aren't licensed, um, things like that, that create an issue. And so, um, the timeframe with choosing a contractor is really, um, put up to the homeowner because if they're grants or loans, so if they're loans, they get to decide what contractor they want. And so that's where that problem comes in because we have to do the mediation between the homeowner and, you know, our staff for them to actually get through that process because they have a lot of ownership on their scope of work and, um, and choosing their contractor.
Gotcha. And so what would explain the consistent application delays, like the, the initial, like, I'm applying for?
I missed the beginning of your question.
The application delay, the delays in, uh, like applications.
Collecting documents. Yeah. So, um, how we, uh, we've changed this model a few years ago. So what we, the initial part is the pre-app. And so the pre-application is just, um, collecting basic information to say, um, I need services. And so that is not an official application. The pre-app is not. Um, and when we do our numbers, those people are considered on our waitlist. Um, we, um, we have a few different, you know, I guess, um, buckets that people sit in during the light process. Um, I'm trying to get to my, get to my numbers, um, to give you what those are. But, um, so the pre-app, if they're in the pre-app status, that's the waitlist. And then once, uh, they're, um, elevated to having a light coordinator actually work with them, that's also kind of on the client because once we do the assessment, we tell them what documents they need for the application. We have to have all of those documents before we actually put them into the workflow for getting to the actual service, if that makes sense.
Okay. Um.
Council?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Gray.
So follow ups, we're going to have to email.
Did you want the numbers? Cause I have them.
Yeah, please follow. Yeah, we'll follow. We can talk about this offline. Uh, and I just have one more thing. It's not a question.
So, yeah, we're going, so we have a tornado watch. So I want to get as many folks as I can get home, home. Um, so we're going to move to Councilwoman Ramos. She's going to get our two questions and we're going to end this so we can do, um, Live Baltimore. Any questions or anything else, just email it. We'll make sure that they get taken care of by this agency.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Commissioner, earlier you said that there's, uh, additional 13 positions, more money that was added to the, um, vacant, uh, strategy, but not clear what those positions were quite yet. Um, is that right? I mean, it sounded like you weren't clear exactly how those would be playing, playing out.
No, um, what we're still working out is the 1.2 million that is in fiscal year 26.
Right. That's what I'm referring to. Yeah.
But we don't think it's going to be 13 positions. Um, it's basically 1.2 million dollars and then utilizing that, um, as best as possible to meet the needs. So it could be less than 13 based on which positions and what the total OBCs are.
Um, well, I think that, you know, given that we're, uh, you know, going to pass this budget, I think we would want a much clearer picture of where those dollars are going to go. Um, and I know that I had asked for the list of the 16 mid-year. Um, because especially with the Delivery Associates Report and all of that, I would imagine that you, you already have a sense of where that's going to go. I mean, we, we certainly can use 1.2 million dollars in other parts of the agency and helping hubs and all of that. And I just don't know, uh, if the mayor's going to give you a hundred and, you know, 1.2 million dollars that you'd have like a plan for the 1.2 million dollars.
We do, we do have a plan. Um, we have a, a full list of positions. And having to like look through and, and work with the 1.2 million dollars, um, is just making some slight adjustments. So it might be that we're moving from three real estate agents, you know, or reducing a construction building inspector or having to reduce one paralegal versus the other. So we've just been making those internal discussions and conversations, but there is absolutely a plan.
Yeah. Well, I think that the, the budget was, um, published a few weeks ago. So I would have hoped that we, by now you would have that. I mean, I think that as a council, we want to be able to pass something very clear cut. We know what the strategy is going to be. Um, so hopefully you'll have that, um, fairly quickly before we pass the budget, um, so that we can understand what's, what's happening there. Um, and then I, um, have to prioritize my other questions. Um, going back to, um, code enforcement, um, relative to rental licensing, but also just inspecting, um, when somebody calls with this new plan to call 311 if somebody is not licensed. But then there's also the question of when tenants call 311 because there's a problem inside. Um, is there, I think this was in Councilman, um, excuse me, Council President Cohen's bill previously to be able to do follow-ups for going inside the property. Um, is that, doesn't seem like that's happening? Is that happening? What's happening?
That bill doesn't take effect until, um, January 1st.
Oh, that's right. But you're getting that rolling in terms of making sure that you're having the, the plan in, in place.
Yes.
Cause I, I mean, honestly, the, the fact that, you know, um, code enforcement had 22 vacancies last time we were here, this time of year, last year, and the, the, they might be different vacancies in different parts, but they're still there. So there's an issue in my mind, there's an issue in hiring. There's an issue, there maybe there's a problem within the department. I mean, something has to happen to be able to fill all those positions. And one of them has to be to be able to get people into the inside of the property. Director Booker, um, Deputy Commissioner Booker, you want to talk about the hiring again? I mean, I know you talked about some of the strategies, but the fact is that people are leaving and, and we're not able to fill those spots.
Well, I don't, I don't think the problem is the hiring. I think the problem is the retention during the training process.
Well, you mentioned that and I understand it is definitely a hard job. I have been out there with our inspector.
Yes, you have.
And it is not easy, absolutely not easy work. Um, and it takes, uh, a lot to, to do. Um, I'm just saying that, you know, part of the retention really needs to be also looking internally at what's happening inside the, the, the division to make sure that the culture is there that's going to provide the opportunity for folks to grow, for folks to, um, express if they're having challenges, you know, all of those things.
And just as a note, Councilwoman, last year in May of 2024, there were 35 open housing inspector and housing inspector senior positions. There are 22 currently.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a little better, but not perfect because we have those positions for you. We're funding them. We're asking for that job to be done. So we want to make sure it gets done.
Yes, ma'am. Um, Councilwoman, I, let me, um, react to that in this way. Um, we have lost people in the training process. Um, as I stated earlier, um, out of the 11 people that have left in '25, nine of them were in the training process, probationary employees. Only one seasoned person left. Um, and over that, this three-year period, when I looked at people leaving the organization for, you know, some of it was during the COVID time and we've had some challenges ramping back up to where we were back in 2021. Um, what we have done since then, um, like somewhere around January or February, um, just to look deeper into our culture, if you will. We started an Inspector Operations Council that meets with me once a month on Wednesday. Um, the minutes of which I have no issue with sharing, um, with anyone that wants to see them. But this was, this is an attempt to, if they have things that they want to bring to us operationally that are challenging, they bring them to me in that meeting. Um, it's six people on that council. They represent their respective district offices. They bring their concerns, um, to the council and we act on them, the ones that we can. Some of it is just explaining process. Um, one person on the council was just promoted to senior inspector because part of the, their process is trying to encourage them to reach for those senior positions. And some of them are just afraid to take the test, but we have had two people that have recently, or they just passed the test. So they'll be promoted real soon. Um, I'm excited about the council as they are. Um, there's a whole bunch of misconceptions that, um, they have in the ranks sometimes because they're not talking to us up here that's making policy and operational stuff. They're dealing with their frontline managers. So I think it's very encouraging, um, to them that they have the opportunity to have the conversation with myself. Um, things that they say, we like to have this and I explain how the budget and stuff works and what we can do and what we can't do. And they've taken it back to their constituents, their other inspectors that they're responsible for, speaking for. And, um, it's been going pretty well.
Uh, yeah, I'd be interested in learning more about that, um, process.
Sure.
And to the extent that, um, um, some of us might be allowed to, uh, be a part of that, that would be good.
I would love for you to come and sit in because part of what I'm trying to teach them is how to be in a board meeting. You know, so it's, it's, they're just growing in this space, growing to be leaders. And, um, I'm pretty proud of the ones that are sitting there. Some came a little edgy, but they, you know, some of the rough edges have been smoothed off at over the three meetings after they got out what they needed to get out. And, um, some of the things that they say, like, like I mentioned earlier about, um, the eight inch ruler for the, taking a picture of the grass and the confrontations that they, they experienced, they bring that back. So we try to figure out operationally how to make that process better for them. Um, so I welcome, you know, anyone to sit in on the council, on one of those, uh, meetings. It's the first, first Wednesday of the, uh, first or second Wednesday of every month.
Are the salaries that we gave you last year, the positions where the salaries were increased, are those filled?
Well, we've, I don't know.
We gave you several, a couple, a few, we gave you a, a boost to see.
Yeah, that, that would spread across the board, right?
Yes. And, um, code enforcement salaries are one of the classifications that are being addressed through our ongoing negotiations with our labor partners regarding how the salary study will be implemented for fiscal '26.
I thought we gave additional money, we, the council negotiated additional money for code enforcement, um, salary increases last year.
There was, there was funding in the budget, um, but we're also working towards a sustainable, ongoing, um, adjustment for those, for that classification as part of our ongoing labor strategy, uh, with, with the union.
Okay. Thanks. Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner, thank you to you and your team. Um, we're going to move into our Live Baltimore presentation at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.